I think we have quorum. And here we go. So we're going to call the order, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission meeting of August 19, 2020, out of an abundance of caution and pursuant to recommendations from federal, state, and local health agencies regarding avoiding group gatherings due to the COVID-19 coronavirus. This meeting is a teleconference meeting. Advance public comments were possible through email, mail, and voicemail. We will also take live comments via phone. And that number is 629-255-1911. And please hold your call until the project you wish to speak about is announced. And at this time, I will take the Commissioner's roll call. And when I say your name, please say present. Vice Chair Cheryl Stewart? Okay, not yet. Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Jones is attempting to get on and is having trouble, from what I understand.
Yes, we're trying to make connection. Thank you, Commissioner Mosley. Commissioner Mahal?
Present.
Commissioner Mosley? Mr. Mosley, are you present?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Price?
Present.
Thank you. So let me try back again. Commissioner Stewart?
Commissioner Stewart is also trying to get back, to get connected. I sent him the link.
Okay, we've also sent him the link. Okay, he is now on. Vice Chair Stewart calling roll call.
Sorry, I'm present. I was muted from the host, so couldn't.
Oh, gotcha. All right.
So that's good now. Thanks.
We are counting you present, sir. Okay. Commissioner Jones? Okay, we will hold off on that and see when she's back on. And we will go ahead and continue because we do have quorum. So the Commission must vote on the record that the COVID-19 pandemic requires us to hold a telephonic meeting as permitted under the Governor's Executive Order Number 16. So I would request a motion.
Madam Chairman, I so move.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
And who might that be?
This is Elizabeth.
Thank you, Commissioner. Actually, I will, just for our script to say is that we are moving this meeting constitutes essential business of this body. And meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in the light of the COVID-19 outbreak. Just a bit of a backtrack there. So I will take roll call on the motion. And I will go down our Commissioner list. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yay.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for putting yourself on mute. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Law, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this Commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. For each case, there will be public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as rebuttal of public comment. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for five minutes as a representative of a group or organization. We have not received any such requests for this meeting. During the public hearing, staff will first read any comments received in writing. No voicemails were received. Finally, members of the public calling in will be heard. Ms. Ziegler, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
Yes, we ask the design guideline consolidation project again be deferred until we can meet in person. We request to remove 1821 Fifth Avenue North. Is that a violation? It's been worked out, and the applicant has requested to defer 726 McFerrin.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion about this revision? I see no hands raised. Okay. A motion to accept our revised agenda for today.
Madam Chairman, this is Commissioner Stewart. So move.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Mahal?
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you very much. And I would like to take the roll call on this. Commissioner, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Thank you. Before we begin with the first case, Ms. Ziegler, are there any council members who wish to speak?
Councilmember Withers has sent some comments, but I'll just read those for their particular cases. We have no other requests.
Thank you. Now is the time for the public to call in if someone would like an item removed from the consent agenda by calling 629-255-1911. It is on screen. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on in a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda will be moved to the end of the agenda. And Ms. Sajid will read the cases proposed for the consent agenda. Then I will ask if anyone would like any item removed for discussion. Ms. Sajid?
Yes, so the first item on consent is approval of the administrative permits issued for the month. And the following addition and outbuilding are proposed at 1903 Beechwood Avenue. The owners of 311 Chapel Avenue request an addition. The project for 1510 Holly Street is an addition and outbuilding. An addition is proposed at 1018 Ackland Avenue. The owners of 1811 Beechwood are requesting an addition and outbuilding. The project for 1814 Beechwood Avenue is an addition and outbuilding. The project for 3531 Central Avenue is for an addition. And lastly, an addition is proposed at 413 North 16th Street. Staff recommends approving these projects along with their applicable conditions as noted in the staff reports.
Thank you, Ms. Sajid. Any questions or any request to remove any item from the consent agenda? I'm skimming through any hands raised. I do not see any. All right. Robin, have we received any requests over the phone?
Just one moment, please. No, we have not had any requests.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, I do not see any hands raised to have any items removed from the consent agenda. So I will take the roll call of Commissioners. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Let me backtrack, going through it a little fast here. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda. Thank you, Commissioners.
So move.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Mahal?
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a... Yes. So now we will take the roll call. Okay, thank you for reminding me. All right, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes. Okay. Now is the time for anyone to call if they have public comment regarding the SP at 1516 Ordway. And that number again is 629-255-1911. And Ms. Baldock will present the project.
1516 Ordway Place vacant lot at the southwest corner of Ordway Place and North 16th Street. In 2009, the site was rezoned with a specific plan or SP to allow for the development of a two-story mixed-use building. This is the third time the project has been for the Commission. The Commission approved similar versions of this project in both 2009 and 2017. Today's application has been submitted by a new owner, but the development is similar to the two previous submissions and meets the SP requirements. Before going forward, I wanted to let you know that these drawings and the PowerPoint have more details than what was provided in the staff recommendation, but the design is the same. Here is a rendering of the development overall. And here is the site plan. The setbacks and footprint conform to the SP and are similar to the previous approvals. Here is the Ordway facade. The elevation will have an overall height of 26 feet, which aligns with the previous Here is the 16th Street facade. Because of the slope of the lot, there's a raised basement in some areas towards the rear. Here is the rear facade. And this facade actually will be highly visible because it is a corner lot. And here is the right facade. This facade will not be highly visible because it is on the interior of the lot. Next slide. On the right side and on the rear, the raised basement is only supported by small posts. Although this may be structurally sound, staff finds that visually the lack of a more solid foundation is not typical for historic commercial and mixed-use building of that Next slide, please. Here is... Oh, sorry, go back. My slide turned around. So here's the basement plan showing where the foundation is open. The original staff recommendation was for the foundation on the right side to be enclosed with masonry. But the applicant has explained that this is not possible due to the parking requirements and getting cars safely in and out. Staff therefore recommends a screening of the parking area that can be worked out with the staff. Next slide. So in summary, staff recommends approval with the conditions noted in the staff recommendation and with the change that the right side parking have screening rather than masonry.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baldock. And I believe the applicant is on the line. And you are welcome to comment. And is that your...
Yes, this is Evan Brooks with Powell Architecture and Building Studio. I believe my colleague, Manley Seal, is also on the line. And we would first like to thank Melissa and the Historic Committee for reviewing this project and accommodating us in the parking requirements. We'd also like to thank Commissioner Councilman Bill Withers for providing his support of this project. In regards to the recommendations, we accept the recommendations and appreciate you working with us on item number two in screening that neighboring opening. As for the rear facade, we accept the idea of wrapping those columns in masonry and trimming out that rear facade so that it provides more of a garage bay opening and is rather than a floating mass. We understand that the staff will approve the final details and materials. And we can, we'll work with the staff to get them the material samples and their approval as we move forward with this project.
Okay. We appreciate you working with staff as well and the applicant. And Ms. Ziegler, do we have any public comment?
We do. Councilman Withers has sent an email that reads as follows. "I would like to express my support for the revised plans for the 1516 Ordway Place specific plan project in the Lachlan Springs neighborhood. I recall in many community meetings that the then District 6 Councilmember Mike Jamison held about this project before the specific plan legislation was applied in 2009. This vacant parcel is the former site of what had been an early 20th century grocery store building. And the proposed mixed-use development envisioned in the specific plan will enhance the commercial corner that exists there at 16th and Ordway. The designs that have been submitted this time improve upon past versions, and I'm sure that neighbors will be pleased that no rooftop deck access is contemplated. There are few opportunities to introduce multifamily housing units in the Lachlan Springs neighborhood, and this proposal does that in a manner that is sensitive to the historic context of the neighborhood and in an appropriate location along a collector street that is part of a bus line. I would encourage the Commissioners to approve this project with the staff recommendation." Thank you. And that concludes the comments.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any call-ins? We do not have any call-ins. And is anyone online that has any questions? Please raise your hand. I do not see anything. By the way, if you do, there is one person that has their hand raised. Please kindly remove your hands. I'll be sure that we catch correct comment. Just make sure you do not have your hand raised and that you have yourself muted. Thank you. All right, since we don't have any other public comments, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Applicant rebuttal? I mean, they probably don't want to.
Okay. Seeing none, we will close.
Is the applicant rebuttal?
Is he... Okay, do you have your hand raised, applicant?
No rebuttal. We appreciate your time here.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe we have a... Mr. Mosley, do you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, for the applicant and the staff. I was looking at the plan that was on the screen. Maybe there's a, there was a column. It appeared there was a column that was removed because it'd be quite a long clear span on the lowest level. Can somebody, can staff flip back through the drawings and put the ground floor level plan up? From the back, it looks like there's a column in the plan. It just appears to be missing. There's a crosshatch on. I don't know if that's a parking space or if that's where they don't want somebody to park so you can make the turning radius to get into the parking. I just was curious what it's gonna, what we're asking them to do and what it's going to, what it's gonna look like, both at the rear. And it's also a little peculiar on the west elevation. You've got conductor heads and downspouts that are coming down, and they just stop. And I don't, if those are gonna extend to grade, it's gonna look a little odd having those floating out there in the middle of, you know, we're talking about a screen, but they're sort of floating out in the elevation that's presented now into the middle of nothing. And I was just wondering if we could get a little bit more, somebody to speak, a little bit more to... I think, I can't see, but if we zoom in, there's a column line there in the middle of the building and on the page right, wherever the intersection of those two columns are. It just, it appears there's a column missing or one not shown in the ground floor plan. To understand if we beat those columns up so it looks like it, it's not just floating what we're gonna get to the end of the day.
Commissioner, which elevation would you like to screen back to?
Both the...
Rear elevation and...
West and the rear, I had questions. The two non-masonry elevations.
So that looks like the rear.
Yeah, so there, if they could just give some more information on what's happening with the downspouts since the garage is open or is gonna have some sort of screen, a to-be designed screen.
Okay, Commissioner. Mr. Brooks, please comment.
Yes, we, we will propose a gutter or a solution to route those downspouts away from that opening so that those downspouts aren't just floating out in space. We actually need that opening for the proper area to back up. And so we can't have those downspouts floating in that space anyways. And so we'll route those to terminate properly into the ground.
So you'll have a, likely have a box gutter of some sort that'll be pretty substantial, and it'll come to one in, you know, either to the north or the south and come down a column or come down, I guess, to grade and then spill into your stormwater treatment.
Yes, sir. And we can look at a few different solutions, but it would be something along those lines.
And when, and maybe the staff needs to speak to this, there is discussion of some screening. And so if you're screening as you, if you need that for cars backing out of and exiting the garage, this screening is likely not attached to the building? Or maybe it's attached, but it gives some additional room to, it's not in line with the facade of the Clappard facade of the, the lower part will be further out on the west side than it would be. It's not right up against the building to allow that additional space to back up into?
Yes, sir. We have considered a privacy fence along the property line that would hide that facade and that portion of the open parking garage. And we are open to staff recommendations as well if they have other suggestions.
What's your, in that case, what would be your, I can't, my eyes don't work that well, my computer screen's not that big. What's your sort of first floor, you know, I see it's zero. What's the top of slab at your parking elevation? What's the delta between those two?
That is less five foot, 10 inches.
Okay, five, so a six-foot fence would pretty much, you know, I was curious if a privacy fence that is within the guidelines, you know, would get you that high and if we need to, if that's amenable to other Commission members, if we could get, you know, allow for a taller fence just to accomplish what we're trying to. We don't want to design it in process or in committee here, but I wanted to make sure we gave as much direction to staff as possible. That's helpful. On the backside, are you following me that it looks like in plan that there's a column missing, but on the rear elevation, if I'm reading it right, it looks like that column does in fact come down, not clear spanning from the east to the west elevation across the entire...
Yes, sir. I understand the confusion there. If we flip to the plan, it, yes, right there. It is accurate that there is no column right there, and we have a large clear span. And that striping is actually our required exit for ADA, for our ADA space. And in order to free that space up as much as possible, we needed to omit the column there. And there's a substantial girder that runs from one side of the building to the other to accommodate that clear span, which will be covered and we can provide, by the fiber cement lap siding. And then we can trim that out as well to...
Got you.
Kind of further define that opening.
And that would, that would also explain that wrapping masonry around that rear elevation would add insult to injury in trying to accommodate all the things that you're trying to do here with this building. In other words, if you added the weight of the masonry, your girder would likely not be able to make that span. So it's coming together for me in terms of what the constraints are you're working within. Okay. Thanks for clarifying those items.
Sure.
Okay, thank you for the discussion. Anything else from the Commissioners? All right. Well, then we will close the public hearing. Mr. Mahal?
Ben, did you have, I just wanted, if there's no discussion, I was going to move that we approve the staff recommendation for 1516 Ordway Place.
I think, I did, I did have one. I don't know if this is necessarily a concern, given that we've approved this previously and it has supported counsel, and we don't see objection to it. I don't have objection to, to the staff working with the applicant to soften some of these, these few little areas. And I think the privacy fence on one side at a height that will make that, render that lower level not visible to the adjacent property. On the backside, it certainly will be visible, and I trust that staff can work with the applicant there. But it is, that is a significant span, and to have that entire facade floating up there is, I can understand the constraints that they're working within, but that certainly will be visible. And I trust that staff can pay close attention to that and come up with something that works to meet the guidelines and also accommodate their constraints.
Commissioner Mosley, are you making a second to the motion?
I don't, if that was a motion, sure, I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Mahal made the motion, and you're now making a second to the motion. So, okay, we have a first and we have a second, and I will do the roll call. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, now is the time for the public to call on the SP at 1228 Fourth Avenue North. And the number is on screen and also 629-255-1911. And Ms. Baldock will present the project.
1228 Fourth Avenue North is a vacant lot in the east development zone of the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. Here is the site plan. In November 2019, MHCC voted to approve the proposed townhouse development's height, scale, overall massing, reform, and site plan as part of a preliminary SP or specific plan review. In February 2020, Metro Council approved the SP rezoning for the site. The applicant is now seeking final approval of the project's design details. This is the front facade that was submitted for the previous preliminary SP review. And here is the current front facade. The height and scale of the townhouse development is similar to what MHCC approved in its preliminary SP review with a few exceptions. The most notable exception is that the front facades of the townhouses along Fourth Avenue North now include gabled dormers. Staff finds that the addition of the dormers increases the overall perceived scale of the townhouses and does not meet the design guidelines. The design guidelines state that new construction can be up to two stories and 35 feet tall in height. Staff finds that the front dormers enlarge the scale of the townhouses to be more akin to two and a half stories. Staff recommends that the dormers on the Fourth Avenue North facade be removed so that the scale of the townhouses can remain two-story. Here are the left, right, and rear facades of the front building. Staff finds that the rear dormers meet the design guidelines since they will not be highly visible from the street, but the front dormers do not. You can also see that the side elevations of the one-story garages. Staff recommends that the brick walls that you can see here be no taller than six feet. Staff also recommends that the brick rolock, a brick rolock, soldier course, or other design detail be included to delineate the foundation line from the wall above. And here are the other facades of the one-story garages which are, which service the front building. And lastly, here are the rear units. Overall, staff finds the materials, fenestration pattern, and overall design meets the design guidelines with the exception of the front dormers, which staff finds do not meet the design guidelines. Yesterday, MDHA approved the project with the condition that the front dormers are removed. Staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation. The most notable one is that the dormers on the front facade be removed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baldock. And the applicant is on the line?
Yes, this is Brian Hahn with Allard Wood Architects. Appreciate you allowing us to present this project this afternoon. We've been working diligently on this project here for the site for about the last year or so, been working closely with the staff to come up with a good solution that fits in the context of the neighborhood and the site. And been working with the local neighborhood as well, the Germantown Historic Neighborhood Association as well. We've met with them numerous times in order to kind of receive their feedback and support for the project. And then we got the recommendations from staff who wanted to present the updated elevation to the design, the Germantown Development Committee and let them review and give their input on the dormers on the front facade on Fourth Avenue. Upon that meeting, it was suggested that we revise the dormers because they were previously shown as shed dormers and they suggested more of a gabled dormer to better fit the context of other dormers in the neighborhoods. One of the gentlemen there gave us several addresses of eight different addresses of properties there with similar context dormer styles. And there's several on Seventh Avenue, 1207, 1218, 1307, a few on Sixth Avenue, which is 1237, 1228, 1314, 6, and two on Fifth Avenue, 1213, 1311, Fifth Avenue. We returned back to the Neighborhood Association with the revised gabled dormer and they felt that the gabled dormers provided appealing visual breaks to otherwise would be a lengthy stretch of uninterrupted roofline. The board voted unanimously to approve the current design and they followed up that meeting by sending an email to both Robyn and Melissa in support of the dormers. I don't know if Robyn is going to read that email like she did the previous one, but I have that here if I need to read it. Also, kind of here is Steve Ezel, who's the developer, owner of the property, and he may chime in as well. We also received an email today that was sent to Robyn and Melissa further kind of reinforcing that the Germantown Historic Committee reviewed the project again last night and were, wanted to reiterate their approval of those dormers. And that was sent to Robyn and Melissa. We understand that the guidelines are geared more towards a two-story appearance. Considering context, we have a three-story, full three-story project across the street. And one block away, we've got a four-story apartment building. So we felt that the, from a massing standpoint, the context supported the design. So I'll let Steve, if he, Steve Ezel, if he has anything he'd like to add, if you could unmute him, but we would respectfully request the commission taking into consideration the support of the neighborhood and the surrounding context when reviewing the dormer issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The other applicant's voice, please say your name and address.
Yes, this is Steve Ezel.
And you are, you are with the...
The developer, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Trimack Builders is the builder and the property is owned by a separate, you know, single-purpose LLC. I just wanted to reiterate that we spent a lot of time with the neighborhood. And, and as Brett DePriest, I think, wrote today to Melissa and Robyn, I want, they, Brett wanted to be a part of this, but it's so a little bit more cumbersome than usual as y'all all know. But in his comment, he said, as you know, I am on the Historic Germantown Development Committee. I want to reaffirm our support of the redesigned dormers in the roof of the street elevations of 1228 Fourth Avenue North. I think that Richard and Ron have contacted historic staff previously. We discussed this briefly at our meeting on Monday and the committee still support these redesigned dormers. And I think part of that is, back to the February letter from the then-president of the Germantown Historic Neighbors Group, his comment was that they felt that gabled dormers provided an appealing visual break to what would otherwise be a lengthy stretch of uninterrupted roofline. And I think most of us, in looking at traditional two-story houses, attic gables are a very common occurrence for the same reason, to break up the roofline. Respectfully, I know that the Neighborhood Association had an awful lot to do with the change in the design guidelines two or three years ago to do away with the party bars rooftops hanging out over the sidewalks. And that was, in talking to some of those people involved in that committee, and I don't know all of them, that was their real objective, is to take away the massing that looked like four-story houses and drop them down to a conventional with these gabled roofs towards the street. It looks like a two-story house. We've got attic gables that break up the roofline. And this Germantown Historic community is really a community-driven design community. And I just think we ought to listen to them and we respectfully request your approval of these three gables facing Fourth Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Ezel. Ms. Ziegler, did you receive any of those comments, the, or other?
Yes, we received comments from Brett DePriest, which I won't read since those have already been read. And we received comments from Richard Audit. And he writes, "Several weeks ago, Steve Ezel approached HGN, the Historic Germantown Neighborhood, with a request that we consider supporting modifications to the MHCC-approved plans for his Fourth Avenue Town Home Project. We indicated that the board was open to listening. His architect, Brian Hahn, showed us a plan with three shed dormers along the street facing facade. While considering his plan, several members noted correctly that shed dormers are uncommon in Germantown. We asked that he submit a revised design showing gabled dormers. Last Monday, he presented these plans to the HGN board and they were quite well-received. The board felt that the gabled dormers provided appealing visual breaks to what would otherwise be a lengthy stretch of uninterrupted roofline. We're supportive of the developers' request for these modifications to the approved plan if MHCC feels that the gabled dormers conform sufficiently with the historic design guidelines for Germantown. Thank you for your consideration of this matter."
Okay, thank you. Any others? Any call-ins? Okay, we have no call-ins. All right, before we do, before we close the public hearing, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or staff? Not at this time? Okay. I will close public hearing and... There's no rebuttal?
Well, there's...
No rebuttal to the, yes, okay. Mr. Ezel and Mr. Hahn, any other comments from you?
I think all the other comments that the staff has made, we're perfectly comfortable with and appreciate their long and service to the Germantown community. It's making it just a beautiful, beautiful community and we are anxious to contribute more to it.
Okay, we appreciate your efforts as well. We may ask you some further questions, but I will now close public hearing if you don't have any other comments. Mr. Hahn, are you good too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good, thank you. Although Commissioner Price might have a question for you. Mr. Price?
Yes, hello. This is actually a question for Melissa or for staff. I was wondering if you could address the issue of the surrounding context that we brought up? I understand the guidelines say where, that in this location, only two stories is allowed, but examples were brought up of properties nearby and across the street that are greater than that. Were they approved by this commission or were they built, were those examples built before the overlay was in place? If you could just sort of, if that makes sense, address that for me, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Sure, yeah. I think all the ones that are around were approved by the commission, but they are approved under the previous design guidelines where the previous design guidelines for Germantown prior to, I think it was 2017 or 2018 when they were revised, allowed for much greater density and our staff and the commission and worked very closely with the neighborhood to provide that based on some concerns about the height that we were seeing on some of these residential streets. So, yes, they were approved by the commission, but they are approved under our previous design guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? I will close public hearing and we will continue discussion or a motion. Commissioner Mosley?
I, I'm compelled by the review of the historic, oh, well, with Historic Germantown Nashville's board review and not, I say approval, you know, this isn't something that is objected to, you know, on its, on its face, but that group, and I know that group was very, not necessarily the exact people who would be reviewing it, but that group was very insistent and quite involved, more so, I think, than many other groups in revising the guidelines. And I think, in my mind, that carries weight here in terms of consideration of this specific issue. That's not an endorsement for approval as much as it is, it's difficult for me to gloss over that or brush over that. I know oftentimes, something looks appropriate and it fits, but it doesn't necessarily meet the guidelines and we, you know, the guidelines should stand on their own. I'm struggling to understand if interpreting the guidelines, that this is a black and white issue as to whether these dormers are appropriately sized and appropriate for this project. The other item, I'm not as familiar with those addresses and I know the applicant, in this instance, it's difficult to understand if there are historic examples of two-story houses with attic gables or attic gabled openings in any of those examples that were given or whether that's more recent construction. Those would be my only comments and certainly open to other members of the commission to weigh in.
So, this is Chair Bell. So, I know with the HGN development review, I don't, it's sort of redundant, hopefully it's not the question redundantly, but is there anything specific in the historic zoning guidelines that comment about the, this addition?
So, the guidelines just state that it should be two stories. The staff position was that by adding dormers, it raises the scale to more of a two-and-a-half story scale versus a two-story scale. So it doesn't specifically, to my memory, call out that you can't have dormers on two-story buildings. It just said that it's limited to two stories in height and staff interpretation is that that means that, you know, it's two stories without kind of any visible attic space at the front.
Could we take a look again at the front facade with the additional dormers? Here we go. Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, with respect to this project, I think that so many of the dormers that we see are the shed-type dormers, which I think it was reported that the Neighborhood Association had objection to those. I think these are modest in scale and don't negate the general massing of the, of the structure and don't really appear to make it much larger than what it is. They seem to be set back appropriately and of a very modest scale. So I don't have objection to, to the dormers as shown.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a side elevation so we can see the step back of the dormers? Guess not, huh?
Yeah, you can see it here, I think they are a step back two feet. What you're seeing kind of behind that dormer is a gable, kind of the gable of the front facade. So you're seeing both the gable and the dormers.
Okay. All right, Commissioner, is any, yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, Madam Chair. I do appreciate the explanation of why at the last minute, final SP review, the gabled dormer was added. Because as far as all the scales and basic design and so forth, the developer followed precisely the SP plan it previously approved. So only change is three additional gabled dormer. But to me, as far as all the mass and scale, maybe all three dormer have appearance of a little taller, but actually mass and scale and everything is no change, only just a dormer. So to me, kind of hearing all the input from developer and input from historical Germantown Neighborhood seems having additional three dormers, gabled dormers, enhanced historical character to me. So I am inclined to support a new change. So I just want to express, you know, where I'm coming from.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Any other comments or a motion? Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, with respect to 1228 Fourth Avenue North, I move for approval of the project with staff conditions two through six.
Okay, there is a motion, is there a second? Commissioner Price?
A second.
Okay, there's a first and a second and I will make roll call. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Jones? Okay, we're going to move to Commissioner Mayhall?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go back to Commissioner Jones, are you on the line? Okay. We do have, we do have the votes that we need, so the motion passes. Okay? Now is the time for the public to comment regarding 1013 Paris Avenue. And the number is on screen and also 629-255-1911. And Ms. Ziegler will present the project. And violation?
Yes, this is violation for 1013 Paris. Rear addition and a side addition were approved at 1013 Paris Avenue in July 2018. The two additions were distinct with an uncovered deck in the area between them. The addition was constructed and closed after satisfactory final inspection on October 2nd.
2nd last year. The property sold shortly thereafter. The date of sale listed is October 8th, 2019. In July of 2020, MHCC staff observed the construction of a covered porch was in progress, connecting the side and rear additions. In situations where a side addition may be appropriate, the MHCC has typically said that a side addition needs to be separate from a rear addition rather than having a single addition essentially wrap the corner continuously from the side to the rear. The covered porch addition makes the two additions continuous. Staff finds that the unapproved covered porch is not appropriate because it wraps the corner continuously, which is inconsistent with previous MHCC approvals and does not meet sections 4A1 and 4A2 of the design guidelines for rear and side addition. Staff recommends that the unpermitted porch be removed within 60 days.
Okay. Thinking Ms. Ziegler? And the applicant is on the line, and please say your name and address. Or perhaps you would not make a comment?
Paul Martin, thank you.
There were two calls, I didn't get it.
Okay, let me try this one more time. Mr. Martin, are you representing the applicant?
Hi, this is Melissa, are you representing the applicant or are you here to comment? Okay, good, okay, so you're here, so let me put you through, I'm going to have him, I'll put you through right now, so you're going to be live in just one second.
Okay, we have a call in too from, okay? Okay? Please say your name and address.
Paul Martin. 15th Avenue South?
Did you, did you say Paul Martin?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. We're just having a little bit of reverberation back here, so want to make sure. Okay?
To walk into another area.
All right.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay?
Yes, okay, so I wanted, just to make my comments brief and I wanted to give time for the homeowner to speak. Kind of been in a state of confusion. I, we took over this project, the homeowner was purchased this home and was shown a set of plans that had a covered porch on the rear. The builder that, that sold the home ended up not completing the majority of the house and they were engaged in a lawsuit. I was recommended and brought on to finish a list of items, this being one of those items. When I was contacted about this, kind of in shock because we asked for the, the building and historical permit to be transferred over and it was our understanding that this was a part of that, that permit. So, we didn't realize that. We immediately called an architect, tried to get them out, but this has all happened over the last week and a half. You can't have any one, the first day we could get someone out is Friday, so they're scheduled. But we, my only comment was we thought we were doing what was planned by the original builder during the purchase. We had read that the, that the roof was to be a hip roof and to be a different material, which we did, so we didn't, didn't realize that, that those two things were connecting. So, I did want to let the homeowner speak, but we did not close out the historical permit, we transferred it over. So, there's just some confusion as to whether or not that has been closed out or not. And, and that was my only comment, I'd like to give the rest of the floor to the homeowner.
Okay. Hello, homeowner?
Chairman, my name is Barbie Jo Todd and I own 1013 Paris Avenue. This is quite a shock I've encountered. I've never even been on the, the, at this video conference, the city planner before or anything like that. When I purchased this home, it was told to be unfinished, my money was taken. And it, that December, I was engaged in a lawsuit with the builder. And I had asked many times for the survey of the lot and of the plans of the house and he never provided me anything. I've engaged probably, oh, I put so much money into just the repairs. I've had two inspections before I started the repairs and I, I just am bewildered at all this. I just moved here from California to be close to my family. I had no idea I was imposing upon anything. I, I bought a beautiful little home that was built crooked by a crooked contractor and I'm just at my wit's end. I really don't know what to do and I haven't really been given enough time to even formulate a game plan here. This is just shocking to me and so I'm, I'm hoping that we can defer this off for a later date so that I can gather some information on this huge incident. I, I don't know exactly how to approach this.
Sure, we understand. We will, we will work through this. Tell me your, your, Mr. Martin? The applicant, is she, is she still on the line?
I am.
Okay.
All right.
Well, there's again some revert back, but anyway, just we'll, we'll come back to you. I do have a question. So, when you're referring, I'm going to ask the, ask this. Can you, can you put yourself on mute for just a moment? Thank you. Staff, when she, they mentioned a transfer of the permit, was there a transfer of a permit?
I don't recall if the contractor changed or not, that's usually not a concern of ours. Permit is the permit and the drawings are attached to the permit.
Okay, all right. Do you have any other comments for the moment applicant?
For me, are you speaking to me Barbie?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am. Do you have any other comments before we take public comments?
Um, no, I just recall that I saw plans when I wrote an offer on the house and after I closed, the plans were refused to give me that or a survey. So, I, I've just been caught in the middle of a storm here. I had no idea, no idea what's going on and this is all shocking to me. I'm, I'm really quite beside myself about this entire thing. I would never do anything that I was not supposed to be doing. I take great pride in everything that I do. I love Nashville, I love my little home. I've been having an upstream battle since the day I moved in. It was, it didn't have gas, it didn't have electricity, I drove across the country to get here and I've had, this holder has really screwed me over and I'm in a, in a deep, deep place with, with the builder and I, through that, I, this is all so, so too much for me.
Okay, okay. All right, well, let's give this a pause for a moment and we will see if there's any public comment that we have. Robin? Ms. Ziegler? Any call-ins? Okay, no call-ins and no, no comments that we have received, okay? Since there has been no public comment, we will close public hearing and we will have commissioners ask any questions to, and discussion to staff. Commissioner Mosley?
If, if the staff could remind us, I believe these, we usually attach 60 days to deadline to the cases like this. If you would remind us of the, the opportunity for the applicant to, or for the property owner to cure, show, show cause on this, that would, that'd be helpful.
We, we didn't take it as a show of cause since the permit was closed out and then this work started. We did put, make the recommendation of 60 days based on the fact that it's not really reworking anything, it's just removing what was constructed, the porch roof and porch post.
There we go.
The chimney is, is, the masonry element is part of the approved plans or not part of the approved plans?
It is not part of the approved plans.
So, it would be also in violation?
It is in violation, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Price?
Yes, is the, is the picture on the right there what the current condition of the violation, is the addition is in or has it been further finished out and closed?
I apologize, Sean Alexander is not with us today and he wrote the staff recommendation. I'm not sure if he's been back out. As, as you noted, that is what was taking place when we first saw it. I believe we did issue a stop work order, so hopefully no more work has taken place.
Maybe that's something that I could ask the applicant then?
Sure, sure. Applicant, Mr. Martin?
Oh, this is Barbie Todd.
Sure. Ms. Barbie, either you or Mr. Martin?
This is Barbie. Hand the phone over to Paul Martin, my contractor, as of now.
Yes, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, so I'm still a little confused, I guess, but to answer your question, no, no, no additional work has been done. It was never intended to be closed. I guess where my confusion is, is I don't, I don't know why that, the permit was closed because there was no final inspection, there was no BO when I was brought onto this project. So, I mean, and that may be a complete moot point, but in its current position, that is, it's exactly where it is and it was intended to be left open. It's not a heated and cooled space, it is a covered porch.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Mr. Martin? Commissioner Johnson first and then Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I think, Madam Chair, so in regards to building permit, I believe what's happened was when this house, the previous owner obtained the permit. And it sounds like March of this year, it looks like following the permit issuance, March of this year, the new permit was issued. That is condition of transfer the permit. So, therefore, the new builder supposed to do what previously permitted, following that condition. So, the permit exactly the same, has to be exactly the same construction that was approved by, you know, this body. And also permit says if you need to modify, it's specified, the permit self-specified, you know, have to go back to history commission and for, you know, get the new modification approval. So, it is specified. So, what I am confused towards builder and homeowner is if you are a builder, homeowner, were precisely following, try to complete, you know, previously approved building plan, why this unallowed chimney and unallowed open porch was added into the, this new construction? So, that's, I, I don't understand it because as you said, you, builder says they are precisely follow their previous permit, so therefore it's not closed, rather transfer by taking over the old permit. And if that's the case, what, what is the discrepancy?
Yes, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones? We'll come back, or Commissioner Johnson, were you, were you finished?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, if anybody, I don't know if homeowner can answer it or if builder can answer it, that's the biggest question to me, thank you.
Right, right. Well, we'll, let's, let's discuss between commissioners first and Commissioner Jones, please comment.
Oh, Commissioner Johnson did exactly the same thing I did and looked at parcel viewer, so that was pretty much the information that I was going to share as well with, or just to try to alleviate the homeowner, you know, you know, I'm not confused about the situation per se. You know, you have set of drawings, the builder builds so that set of drawings that has been approved, so, but yes, that is pretty much duplicate of, I agree with everything Commissioner Johnson just said.
Okay, Commissioner Mosley? Commissioner Mosley?
Couldn't, couldn't find the unmute button. I think for the benefit of all, these situations are, are not fun to deal with for, for anybody involved. But however, here we, here we find ourselves and it sounds like the applicant certainly doesn't, doesn't want to be in this position here. I think based on what her current contractor and, and what the homeowner said is that it seems to me that if any misrepresentations have been given, it, it would be by the seller because the permit that was pulled didn't include, we haven't reviewed what's drawn here and what they're working from. And as unfortunate as it might be, we're not in a position to retroactively allow or accept something that isn't on a set of drawings that's, you know, registered and permitted and approved with, with the, with the city and with the authorities having jurisdiction and as terrible as that might be, that's just where we find ourselves. We really aren't party to any recourse that, you know, that the homeowner may need to take for whatever representations were made about whether this could or couldn't be done. And I imagine the staff has explained to the homeowner that, you know, an application could be made for this, but this is, that's not what we're here to do, that's not what's been done, this is a violation case to make a determination. And I guess I, I just wanted to clarify those points. It doesn't seem to me that there's any confusion from, from, as far as the commission is concerned as to whether this work is permitted on the, on a set of plans that's on record and attached to a valid permit with, you know, the city of Nashville.
Okay. I, I want to get back to that, but I'm going to, I'd like to hear Commissioner Mayhaw. Ms. Todd has requested that we possibly could defer this and I was wondering if, what the possibility was of deferring this removal for, say, 90 days instead of 60, if that might give her some sort of relief to figure out what she's going to do here. I know, I know where we're headed here, but, but she has asked for a deferral and I, I certainly don't have a problem with additional 30 days if, if, if that will help her and if that's permissible. Okay, let's hold that up for one of our points. I do want to, okay, Commissioner Jones?
Oh, I was just going to comment on that. Deferring the case would mean that it's current, that we rehear the case. I think maybe what Commissioner, Commissioner Mayhaw can correct me, but maybe giving it, depending on how we vote, giving a little more time for the homeowner to work with it, but deferring the case means that we will have to rehear the case in the future. That's just my thought on that.
Right.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Jones, that's what I meant, is, is, could we just delay it a little bit longer is what I meant to say.
Right. Because if it's deferred, if there's anything new to the project, then that's what we would review if that would have been a deferral. They can correct, staff can correct me if that is not correct. So, what I'm hearing is that if, it would be longer than the 60-day ask. Commissioner Jones, did you have something else? I do want to have a comment to the applicant, okay? For the applicant to speak, I'd like to speak to the, to the contractor. I know you've mentioned that you were confused, however, I think you hear the commission debate or the discussion is that if there was a permit with Metro and those plans were... and those plans were still with Metro under and approved by then, then how, where was the confusion for you?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, the previous builder had a set of plans with this on it. When I communicated with Fred Don on this, he said that that was something that was originally applied for and then rejected. That information was not shared with us. Um, so, I, that is where the confusion comes in. I've never, ever been in a situation like this before, so, um, this is new territory for me in that regard. I saw a set of plans with this on it, and so it was my belief that that is what was approved, and that is where the confusion has arrived. I didn't know that the historical, uh, that that was closed out, or I would have gone directly to historic and made, made sure that, or that, that that was the case, but we saw a, a set of plans that had the, the roof on it and masonry, and so I, I believed that that was the case. I didn't know that they were rejected, that, that information was not shared with us. So that, I guess that is where our confusion has come in, we had no clue that that was not an approved set of plans.
Okay. There might be other factors there, but we'll, we will, we are hearing you, and, um, okay, for just a moment, uh, Commissioner Mosley?
I, I, I want to reiterate, um, there's no small amount of money that's been spent here to, um, construct this, and, uh, if, if in fact it must be removed, there's additional money, but I, I think the, I just want to clarify that, that, that recall, if a representation was made by the seller, um, to the current homeowner, then that, that would be the person to seek, uh, some, some recourse from, and that this board is, is, um, unfortunately unable to give, give any.
Right. Again, applicant, we sympathize with your situation, um, just because this is public hearing and it's good to have these discussions, other, other prospects can hear that. Again, because you are, um, it sounds like the, Ms. Barbie is new to Nashville, and so our, our purview as a commission is what we are under guidelines with the, um, which one is this one, Waverly Belmont? Uh, with, under the Waverly Belmont Conservation Overlay, so just please understand that what we see in front of us is, uh, we are guided by those guidelines, so again, knowing that this is no small amount of money, um, as our commissioners are very aware of. So we absolutely sympathize, but we are, uh, our purview and our charge is to, uh, follow the guidelines as best as we can. Okay, Commissioners, um, if there's any other comments, or is there a motion? Commissioner Mosley?
The end was up, but I'll go ahead and make one. I, um, moved to, um, approve the staff's recommend, I'm not exactly sure the, the right way to go about this, essentially, I'm recognizing that the uncovered porch is not appropriate, um, based on the staff's analysis and recommendation, and that we follow the recommendations of staff, that the unported, unpermitted porch shall be removed within 90 days, which would give an additional 30 days of, um, time for the owner to try and, um, work, work their way to satisfactory, if there is a more satisfactory outcome, it would, it would give them some opportunity there, so that, that would be my, my change from the staff's recommendation. And certainly if there's, um, some comment from staff in, legally, how, how I need to say that if I hadn't said it in the right way, please, uh, in, in, inject yourself into the motion.
All right, Commissioner Mosley, Commissioner, Vice Chair Stewart?
Uh, a second.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a second, and I will take the roll call. Uh, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay. So Ms. Ziegler, have we given enough information to move forward? Okay, um, she nods her head, yes, and, um, again, applicant, um, we sympathize with you, and please continue your discussions with, uh, the staff at M.H.D.C. Thank you so much. Now is the time for the public to call, uh, in regarding the violation at 908 910 Shelby Avenue, and the number is on screen, and also 629-255-1911, and Ms. Baldock will present the project, uh, violation.
908 Shelby is a violation. The owners painted the house, addition and adjacent structure are dark blue color, which does not meet the design guidelines. This site consists of a historic house constructed between 1908 and 1914, a circa 1917 addition to the historic house that is used for apartments, and a separate circa 1972-story brick apartment structure. While the historic house contributes to the historic character of the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay, the addition and separate apartment do not. Here is a detail showing that both the red brick and the stone foundation was painted a dark blue. Here's the 2019 Google Street View. At this time, the brick was painted a red brick color. And here's a 1980s photo showing the red brick, uh, what, what color the brick was prior to painting in the gray stone. The design guidelines state that generally the use of paint, stain, water repellent, or any other type of coating on brick is not appropriate. It then further states that previously painted brick may be repainted using a color which approximates the natural material color of the original brick. And for stone, similarly, it states previously painted brick, uh, previously painted stone may be repainted using a color which approximates the natural color of stone. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval, finding that the blue paint on the brick and stone foundation does not meet the sections, uh, 25C and 3BG of the design guidelines. Staff further recommends that the applicant submit samples of paint to the M.H.D.C. staff for review within 30 calendar days, and the buildings be repainted in colors M.H.D. staff approved within 60 calendar days. The bricks should be painted a red brick color and the stones should be painted a gray stone color.
Finished, Ms. Baldock? Okay. And again, we're under the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay, so it has some stricter guidelines there. Um, and is the applicant on the line?
I don't think that the applicant is on the line, I know that they were having...
Okay, maybe they'll call in. Do we have any call-ins? Okay, no call-ins at the moment? All right, um, Commissioners, do you have any questions right now before discussion to staff? Okay. Commissioner Mosley?
Is it, uh, I have this question from the staff, I know we're, we're giving them 30 days to come up with a color selection, um, and I, I can't imagine...
60 days, 60 days.
Well, it's 30 days to come up with the color selection and 60 days to appear to match.
Oh, yeah, I got you, I got you, when it's 30 days, sorry, sorry, Commissioner.
I wanted to, you know, if, for some reason, the, the original color selection's rejected, um, I, this, this, this doesn't need to go on forever and ever, so I, maybe in the motion, we could give a, a hard, a hard stop, that they've got to submit something that's, um, that's appropriate within a particular period of time.
Okay. All right, um, I will close public hearing, let me, let me do that first. And, um, so Commissioners, um, under discussion. Commissioner Jones?
Sure, um, I agree with Commissioner Mosley, and just again, I'm, I'm reading the, um, recommendation, and to my understanding, um, it's asking, you know, rev, uh, submit samples of paint for staff to review within 30 days, and that the buildings be repainted in colors M.H.D.C. staff approved within 60 days. Um, so with that in mind, to me, that, that hits that point, and so, i- if there's no other, I think this one's pretty cut and dry, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion for 908 Shelby Avenue, um, to proceed with staff recommendation, um, to repaint the structures as, uh, recommended by staff with, uh, submit samples for M.H.D.C. staff to approve and, or to review within 30 days, and that the buildings must be repainted in colors that are staff-approved within 60 days.
Okay. Let, let me, um, hold that motion for just a second. Uh, Commissioner Mosley, was that, was that clear to you, or that, were you suggesting something else?
Uh, it, it, it's clear to me, I, I think what we're, it, it, you know, they have 30 days, so this is not necessarily a 90-day process, they have 30 days to submit it, the staff needs a minute, you know, more than a 60 seconds, or even 24 hours to review it and approve it, and if it's rejected, you know, it could go on and on. I, I think my, my only point was to say that, you know, if they can't do it in 45 days, the staff will help them and tell them what to do, and then they'll have 60 days to do it. That, but I, that, that may be a little, a little much, a little overbearing, but, uh, this is a violation case and, and no need to mess around with this for too long.
Right, uh, I'm reading this again, just to be sure we're not ambiguous about it.
We need a second.
Yeah, oh, yes, um, right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Jones, and Commissioner Price, are you making a second?
Yes, I would like to second the motion.
Okay. Okay, there's a, first and there's a second, I'm, let's, so let's discuss it for just one moment.
So Commissioner Jones, um, in hearing what you said, I rewrote the motion, and so please tell me if this is correct, to say, the applicant shall obtain approval of paint color within 30 calendar days, and the buildings shall be repainted in 60. So rather than saying reviewed, it should be approved?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So do you agree, but, so that motion, uh, she agrees, um, Commissioner Price, you agree with that motion?
Yes, that's what I mean, I agree.
Okay, very good, so I think we're clear, we're just clear on the motion with the, the verbiage there. All right, I'll take, or I'll take roll call. And, let's see here, right, okay, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Now is the time for the public to call, uh, regarding the violation at 1309 Sixth Avenue North, and the number is on screen, and also 629-255-1911, and Ms. Ziegler will discuss.
Thank you, this is another violation. Um, the design of new infill at 1309 Sixth Avenue North was approved by the M.H.D.C. on March 20th, 2019. A condition of approval was that window, door, roof color, brick, and stone selection would be approved by staff prior to installation. This requirement was repeated in the permit, number 2019-014004, both on the cover page and as notes on each of the drawings. The installed brick is tan or a taupe color. The design guidelines specify in Germantown that masonry should be similar to historic colors of the same or similar materials. Traditional brick colors range from a red-orange to a dark red. The windows, front door, courtyard floor, and porch floor have been approved through an email confirmation to the applicant or the contractor. Staff has no record of having received a request for approval of roof material or brick selection. The installed roofing material is black or dark gray, standing seam metal. Standing seam is an appropriate material, and dark colors are typical to historic houses in the surrounding area. Via email, we forwarded a document to you, um, from the applicant, showing properties that are not red. All of those examples show two different types of properties, either historic buildings, painted, prior to the overlay, or that could be violations, and nonhistoric buildings, that were constructed, constructed prior to the current design guidelines, which were approved in 2017. In the past, the commission has not used nonhistoric buildings as context. In addition, here you see the immediate context. Staff recommends that the installed black roof color be approved. Staff further recommends that the brick shall be stained a red color, more compatible with the colors surrounding historic houses, with the color selection to be approved by M.H.D.C. staff prior to application.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ziegler. We are trying to see if the applicant is on the line?
Uh, this is Brady Frye. I was the general, I'm the general contractor on the project.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe Jason Probie is on the line, the homeowner as well.
All right. You're, you're welcome to make comment.
Okay, yeah, I'll start. Uh, my name's Brady Frye, uh, I'm the general contractor on the project. Uh, I've done numerous, probably several dozen projects, in a number of the historic areas, 12 South, Belmont, et cetera, and aware of the, you know, the guidelines and procedures, um, also, you know, know the staff, um, you know, uh, like a contractor that would have a number of projects would. Um, I have in my notebook, and, and I should have been, would have been signed in, that, um, I, uh, appeared before Sean, um, who I've always had a great working relationship with, I think Sean would, would attest that I'm a known rule follower, not some kind of scofflaw or person that tries to, uh, work around, uh, try to work with codes in their historic, not around or, uh, them. And I appeared down there on October 3rd, I was in an effort to make a window order, and had a pretty lengthy conversation with Sean, you know, regarding some details to the casing of the window. Um, he was, he was requiring a two-inch casing, as opposed to a four-inch, we discussed, um, some detailing to the front bay. Um, I provided a window section, um, to Sean, uh, provided by the window manufacturer, uh, brought the roofing material and a brick to that meeting. Uh, Sean and I had been in communication, um, I just said, hey, Sean, this is the date, you know, in my notes, because I have some subsequent communication to the homeowners of, hey, this is, I was down at Coates today, this is where we're at, and, uh, subsequent to that date, I provided Sean and Fred, uh, like they said, you know, we didn't have a, a door selected at the time, uh, of that October 3rd, 2019 meeting, but I provided, you know, the subsequent information necessary to have a door that would be, uh, meet their approval, um, as well as, as paving, so, you know, I don't really know what the disconnect was, um, between the time I met Sean, you know, um, on October 3rd, um, you know, again, I believe that I was proceeding with the endorsement approval of the, uh, uh, Historic Commission on that meeting. I know the homeowner has some information, but, uh, uh, you know, Sean and I have kind of bantered back, back and forth, um, on that, and all I said is, Sean, this is the date I have it, I would've signed in, um, you know, uh, uh, you know, we wouldn't take a, a bold step as to, you know, um, you know, make our own, you know, select a, a brick cladding color without the approval of, of historic. But anyway, I'll defer the rest of the time to Jason Probie, uh, the homeowner.
Well, while you're on the line there, Mr. Frye, so when you said that you brought your samples, did you, are you still there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, did you bring your brick sample?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, and the homeowner is on the line as well? Okay, we are waiting for the call-in. Okay, homeowner, are you in? Please, uh, say your name and address. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, please say, please, uh, are you the homeowner?
I am.
Okay, and please say your name and address.
Jason Probie, 909 Sixth Avenue.
I'm sorry, Jason?
Probie.
Probie? Okay. Uh, you're, you're, um, you're not, you're not coming through very well.
Can you hear me better?
Try that one more time.
And you hear me better now?
Okay, uh, please say your name one more time.
Jason Probie.
Okay, very good, and your address is?
1309 Sixth Avenue.
Okay, very good, thank you so much. And, and do you have comments, sir?
I do, I do, well, I just want to first introduce myself as the homeowner. My wife and I have been a part of the design... My wife and I have been a part of the design of this property for since the beginning and as well as a vested interest in Germantown. We're business owners, I'm actually calling from our offices on Fourth Avenue. So I just want everyone to be aware that we're, you know, part of the Germantown community and all of it and work here. And we're, you know, excited to contribute to our community with this project, including the design of the brick. And there's also a reference to some of the variety of brick color in Germantown that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention. On Sixth, Fifth, and Fourth Avenue, there's, you know, actually not that many buildings are entirely red, there's a variety of tan, gray. The building I'm actually calling you from, Fourth Avenue, is a very light, so I just want to bring it up to light and hopefully there's some architectural diversity and our desire to work with the commission from the beginning.
Okay, I think you did send us, we did get a, an email on the pictures. Okay?
Yeah.
All right, any other comments?
No, like I said, we're just looking to work with the commission from the beginning. And, you know, my wife and I live in a house, raise our family, and we're excited to be a part of this community. We actually own the adjacent property as well.
Right, so do you have any comments? Do you have any comments on the specific violation?
Oh, specific violation? Well, again, I'd like to apologize for any misunderstanding. I was not aware of this till basically last week. And so we were going forward, assuming that this has been approved. I know the original permit actually had the image of the house, it's a very similar color that we have now on there. So again, we're not trying to fly anything under the wire, but, um, yeah, just like that, be taken into consideration.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms., I think we're, yes, we're, if you are done, we are going to ask for public comment.
Yes, Ron Hogan, President of the Germantown Neighborhood Association writes the following. I'm writing on behalf of the Historical Germantown Neighborhood Association Board to inform you that the HGN Board would like to adhere to the Historic Germantown Guidelines that state masonry should be similar to historic colors of the same or similar materials. Traditional brick colors range from red oranges to dark red. Thus, we support the MHCC staff recommendation that the brick be stained a red color more compatible with the colors of surrounding historic houses.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments and call-ins? All right, no other public call-ins. Applicant, do you have a rebuttal to the statement from Germantown Neighborhood Association?
Homeowner.
Okay. All right, Mr. Probe? Can you get him back on? We'll see if the applicant can come back on the, on the line.
I'm just checking.
I'm having technical issues.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Probe, did you have a, any comments to the statement from the Germantown Neighborhood Association?
Well, again, I, you know, I would like, you know, I purchased the property and I built a single home on it and I, you know, as best I could to make it designed and kind of marry the old and new, taking into consideration everything that the commission had to say. And if you look down all the different blocks of Germantown, there is a variety of colors. I want to build two townhomes that had a kind of reddish front, we're trying to, again, marry the old in.
Wait, our commission may have other, other comments to you, but we're going to take that hold and after your rebuttal, I will close. Can you please put your phone on mute? Okay, thank, thank you. We have always these technical things. I will close public comment, public hearing right now and we'll have commissioners have discussion.
Like the previous violations we've seen today, this seems to be a pretty cut and dry case of being out of, out of bounds. I'm not really sure how the brick color was chosen when it's clearly not allowed within the Germantown Design Guidelines. So I support the staff recommendation to have it restained or painted an appropriate color.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mayhaw?
I second that motion.
Okay, oh, Commissioner Price, was that a motion? Okay.
Yes, I can make it a motion.
All right.
With respect to 1309 Sixth Avenue North, I move to approve the staff recommendation that the installed black roof color shall be, is approved, but that the brick shall be stained a red color more compatible with the colors of surrounding historic houses.
Okay, there's a motion. Commissioner Mayhaw?
Now I second the motion.
Okay, very good. There's a first, there's a second, and we will take the roll call. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Jones? Oh, Commissioner Johnson, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, now we will move to public comment, excuse me. So we're now going to take, here's the number to call for public comments, to 1812 Lilian Street. That number is on screen and also 629-255-1911. And Mr. Hoffman will present the project.
Yes, 1812 Lilian Street is a rear addition to this contributing home in Lachlan Springs. The proposed partial demolition meets the design guidelines with the exception of the existing window opening in the next slide, which is on the right side of the historic home. As drawn, this is proposed to be altered to a set of French doors. Staff recommends that it only is changed to a single door to maintain the rhythm and proportion of openings. The demolition plan also includes a small section on each side facade that was unclear. Staff recommends that the applicant confirm that scope of work. I'll note, having spoken to the applicant earlier today, that those sections of demolition on the sides are for the new windows, which are noted. The new dormer on the right side is a long dormer spanning both the historic and the new roof form of the addition. A dormer could be appropriate on the addition's roof if scaled to the historic building and in a manner keeping with historic precedent, but staff finds that as drawn, the long dormer is not compatible and recommends that this be revised to two different dormers or that it is moved solely to the addition's roof and with appropriate glazing for a dormer instead of just the one small window. The addition meets the remaining design guidelines with the conditions of staff review of materials. I'll note there is also an outbuilding indicated on the site plan, but no drawings of it were submitted, so it has not been part of this review. To conclude, staff recommends approval with the conditions noted in the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I believe the applicant is on the line. Please say your name and address.
Hi, this is Brett Hunter with Arthemard, located at 1904 Bostedell Street.
We, Mr. Hunter? Mr. Hunter? Mr. Hunter? Uh, we're not hearing you very clearly.
Okay, if you're listening on the computer, you can just do it on the computer, not through the phone.
Right, I think we have you on two.
I'll be on the phone, you can do it on the computer.
Mr. Hunter?
All right, someone have things.
Okay, we believe we've worked that out. We were trying to be sure we hear you more clear, clearly. Okay, let's try that one more time. Mr. Hunter? Mr. Hunter?
Historic zoning, is this Brett?
It is.
Hey, you should, are you able to make it work through the computer?
Probably.
Okay, we can do it both ways, so I think what we want to do is, oh, there you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Okay, let's try that. I think you ended the phone call and you are speaking through your, your computer.
I am.
Okay, let's, let's try that. We were unclear because you were on both, both sides of that.
Very sorry about that.
Okay.
My name is Brett Hunter with Arthemard, located at 1904 Bostedell Street. Thanks a lot to the Historic Zoning Commission for, and particularly Paul Hoffman for extending a guiding hand throughout this process. The project at 1812 Lilian Street is a rear addition to the existing home and I think we agree with all of the staff, staff recommendations. I will note that there was a more updated drawing set that was submitted at the submittal date, that I don't know if that's what's showing up on Paul's notes. So particularly on that side dormer, I just wanted to point out that the site guideline or the sight line from the street is noted on the, and drawn on the side elevation that shows that that side dormer would be out of view. It sits below the ridge line as well as the eve line on the side of that house. And just wanted to ask if there was any kind of variance or if there was any kind of recommendation that would be given to us to be able to continue that shed roof as it.
Okay, we may not have a question right now. It doesn't look like I have any commissioners raising their hand, but continue your, your comments and then we can go from there.
As far as the, as far as the printout on the five or the, we were provided a proposed addition that steps out beyond the side walls because the building's less than 30 feet, but the addition will not be taller than the existing home. We have since redesigned it so that it sits at the same height as the existing home and does not sit taller.
Okay, okay, duly noted.
And that's all I got.
Okay. All right, well, hang out for a second, see if we can, we might have some more questions for you, Mr. Hunter. Thank you. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay, do we have any call-ins? No call-ins. All right, we were closed, public hearing, and have commissioners discuss and questions.
I was wondering if the applicant could see the screen and see the, the drawings that we were looking at and if they are, and if he could explain what might be different from what is proposed to us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Of course. The roof of that screen porch and the rear addition has been lowered to be continuous with the existing ridge.
How much lower?
Say that again?
How much lower?
Uh, plus.
Or is it too high? I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you, I, I just.
It, it's a little difficult for the commission to review something they don't have in front of them, so their decision today will have to be based on the drawings that were submitted as a part of the application.
I, I understand. The application included day due drawings as well as revised elevation, so I'm not sure, there might have been a mis, there might have been a miscommunication there on my part.
This is Paul here. We can likely go ahead and issue the day due permit administratively, assuming that it meets all the requirements, but, but that, that wasn't part of this drawing set. But I'll get those from you another time.
Okay, Mr. Price?
Yes, looking at the plans and hearing from the applicant and staff, I think this looks like a good addition. I agree with Paul that that dormer, side dormer needs to be worked on to find some solution where it doesn't bridge both the historic portion of the house and the new addition. So I am inclined to support the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Mayhaw, did you want to have any addition to your questions at the beginning here?
Well, as long as Commissioner Price, that's what I was concerned with, not the height of the roof, I understood that. I just didn't understand the difference in the, in the dormer that the applicant was talking about, but if the staff can work with him and, and get that in line with what they agree with, then I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Stewart?
With respect to 1812 Lilian Street, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
There's a motion, is there a second? Commissioner Price?
Second.
All right, first and a second, I'll take the roll. And it goes to Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Historic zoning, okay.
Now is the time for the public to call in for comment on 700B Shelby Avenue. The number is on screen and also 629-255-1911. And Ms. Sajid will present the project.
Yes, this is a request to construct a detached infill behind an existing house at 700 Shelby Avenue. The house located at 700 Shelby was constructed circa 1950 and does not contribute to the historic character of the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. Since the existing house is not historic, the house can be demolished and infill that meets the design guidelines could be constructed on the lot. The lot is at the corner of South 7th and Shelby Avenue and the proposed infill would be oriented to South 7th Street. The design guidelines for Edgefield list three circumstances in which a detached dwelling could be appropriate. One, there is not enough square footage to legally subdivide the lot, but there is enough frontage and width to the lot to accommodate two single-family dwellings in a manner that meets the design guidelines. Two, the second unit follows the requirements of a detached accessory dwelling unit, or three, an existing nonhistoric building sits so far back on the lot that a building may be constructed in front of it in a manner that meets the rhythm of the street and, and the established setbacks. Staff finds that this particular lot does not meet any of these conditions. The lot frontage and area are typical for this block of Shelby Avenue, the detached unit does not meet the daddy standards, and the existing house is not situated at the rear of the lot. Furthermore, the commission has more recently approved several examples of infill duplexes that do meet the Edgefield design guidelines. Two of the three shown here are also located on a corner lot. The top left is a duplex located at 714 Shelby and the top right is a duplex at 719 Shelby, which is at the corner of Shelby and South 8th Street. And the bottom photo is the infill duplex that was approved last year for 628 Shelby Avenue, which is the site directly across South 7th Street from the subject property. The detached structure has a one and one-half story form with a ridge height of 28 feet from grade. While the one and one-half story form as well as the height and width could be appropriate for infill, the location of the infill at the rear of the lot does not meet the design guidelines. In addition, the height and scale of the proposed infill overwhelms that of the existing non-contributing house at the front of the lot, which is one story and approximately 14 feet tall. The infill includes wall dormers on two facades. This does not meet the design guidelines, which require that dormers be set in two feet from the wall below. which require that dormers be set in two feet from the wall below. The dormer facing South 7th Street incorporates a balcony that is located fully under roof. There are two small horizontal windows on the left side facade that do not meet the design guidelines. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed infill, finding it does not meet the following sections of the Edgefield Design Guidelines: Section 3B2A, setback in rhythm of spacing; 3B2B, height; 3B2D, roof shape; 3B2E, orientation; and 3B2F, proportion and rhythm of openings.
Okay, Ms. Sajid, you are complete. Okay, thank you. And do we have the applicant on the line?
Yes.
Yes, the chair?
Yes.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Thank you for allowing me to present our proposal to the commission.
Can you please say your name and address?
Yes, I'm Dexter Samuels. My wife, Avaneta Davis-Samuels, we are the homeowners of 700 Shelby, but we actually live on 929 Russell Street.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I'd like to begin by saying that we are of the Edgefield community. We've lived here for 18 years. My wife and I purchased our property in 900 block of Russell Street as a new start to our family. We've raised a son, three dogs, and so we are of this community. We're just not investors. We are interested and believe that the community context and cohesion of the neighborhood is vitally important. When this opportunity presented itself to purchase 700 Shelby, we did quite a bit of research. And as a part of the research, we found that there were three units that were approved by the commission for 820 Shelby. You know, having done several projects through the commission, one on Shelby and one on Holly Street, I know that precedent matters. We based our purchase on the premise of this past practice and that we could have a phased approach and an orientation of an approved unit, similar to that that was approved by the commission for 820 Shelby. Our project is less dense than the project at 820, only having two units specifically. And when we look at the guidelines, and in speaking with the staff, and they've been very helpful, we found that there are alternatives to having a duplex. And in fact, in Criterion One, that states specifically that there is not enough square footage to legally subsidize the, or the lot, but there is enough frontage and width to the lot to accommodate two single-family dwellings in a manner that meets the design guidelines. We do have an approved HPR, and so we are asking that the commission considers that guideline for Criterion One. So in summary, and I would like to add that in listening to some of the past projects that were presented today, a commissioner mentioned specifically that the guideline speaks for itself. And so when you look specifically at the guidelines for this particular project, that a separate unit is permissible. What we received in terms of an email on June 26th is that the main issue with the project was the orientation of the separate unit. You know, we've met the guidelines. We've made major modifications to the design. Originally, it was a two-level design similar to what was at 820 Shelby. So we've made those modifications. This new revelation in terms of dormers that is new information to me, and we would be happy to make that adjustment. But again, the main stumbling block, from my understanding and what was communicated to me by the staff, was that a separate dwelling was not permissible. So what I'm formally requesting from the commission is that we approve this project based on the past precedent of approving 820 Shelby, that our current project meets the design guidelines in Criterion Number One, including the site setbacks, height restrictions, and so forth. Also, and lastly, this new build project really is only realistic in a phased-in approach, as approved by the commission for 820 Shelby. It is not feasible to demolish this unit just based on the current purchase price and that the rental would be the best if not approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Samuel. Ms. Ziegler, do we have public comment?
Yes, we have a comment from Councilmember Withers. He says, "I'm writing in support of the staff recommendation of disapproval for the proposed detached duplex at 700B Shelby Avenue. The commission has considered and approved detached duplexes in Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning District on lots that are unusually wide, such as a recent project on Russell Street, where the lot was nearly 90 feet wide and was almost a double lot. In that case, it was possible to build two infill houses on the lot while maintaining the historic rhythm and spacing of the street. But there are no unusual characteristics about this lot at 700 Shelby, and therefore I would encourage the commissioners to uphold the requirement that duplexes be attached. There have been several attached duplexes constructed in Edgefield and specifically on Shelby Avenue in recent years, and those projects met the design guidelines. But I concur with the staff analysis indicating that this project does not. Thank you."
Any call in?
We lost, we lost the call, but they'll call back.
Okay. If you were trying to call in, please try so again. Right, we don't have any other public comment at the moment. And Mr. Samuels, you are welcome to have a comment on the Councilman, Councilmember Withers, or if you have any other comment.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I did have a chance to try to reach out to Councilman Withers, but did not get a return call. When you look at particularly 820 Shelby, 820 Shelby is not a double lot. So the width of the lot is similar of 820 to 700 Shelby. So based on his premise, I would respectfully disagree that 820 Shelby is quite similar to the lot that we're proposing in terms of the project.
Okay. All right, if you have no other comments, I will close public hearing. And it will be time for the commissioners to discuss or have other questions. Vice Chair, you have your hand up. Do you have a comment, or was that just?
Madam Chairman, I think that this is a fairly straightforward project, and we have, as far as I know, never approved structures that are larger in the back than the ones in the front. I happen to agree with both staff recommendations and with Councilman Withers' comments as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I agree with Vice Chair. And I was looking at the 820 Shelby Avenue. Characteristic difference is two unit behind 820 Shelby Avenue is facing 9th Avenue. And whereas this 700 Shelby Avenue is a mid-block, so its lot characteristic is totally different from the developer referenced. So I think it's a really straightforward case. I'm leaning to support our staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Price?
Yes, with respect to 700B Shelby Avenue, I move we approve staff recommendation for disapproval of the project.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Vice Chair Stewart?
Second.
All right, there's a first and a second. I will take the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, and the motion passes. Now, again, the time for public comment to call in on 703 Shelby Avenue, and the number's on the screen, and also 629-255-1911, and Ms. Sajid will present the project.
A house located at 703 Shelby Avenue is a circa 1920 brick bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay District. The applicant has requested to paint the brick. The brick on the rear wall has already been painted without a preservation permit. The applicant has requested to paint the historic brick in order to cover existing stains as well as brick and mortar in need of repair. The stained areas are located near the front corners of the house and appear to be where the gutters were previously located. The owner has suggested that the brick may have previously been painted or stained, but staff's inspection of the brick was unable to conclude that that is the case, with the exception of the rear wall that was painted more recently. Some of the bricks appear to have either been damaged or worn down by recent or previous cleaning attempts or to have been stained by mortar in previous repointing efforts. Staff also observed some individual bricks in need of repair. The owner has attempted to clean the brick using paint thinner, acetone, a wire brush, and multiple power washes, which are not effective or appropriate methods for cleaning historic brick. Section 2B5C3 of the Edgefield Design Guidelines states that the use of paint or stain on brick is not appropriate and that if brick is so deteriorated that it cannot withstand the weather, a water repellent or paint may be appropriate. Staff finds that this case does not seem to meet the criteria for when painting brick could be appropriate. Instead, staff recommends that the mortar be repointed and brick be repaired as needed. If additional cleaning is desired by the applicant, staff recommends a gentle alkaline chemical cleaner or poultice, such as those made by ProsoCo. The appropriate cleaner should be determined by testing different products as different types of masonry and staining have different requirements that can only be determined by testing. The rear facade has recently been painted without a preservation permit. While painting the brick does not meet the design guidelines, staff finds that leaving the rear wall painted could be appropriate since the rear facade is not visible from the street. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the request to paint the brick, finding that the project does not meet Section 2B5C of the Edgefield Historic Zoning District and Book and Design Guidelines for when it is appropriate to paint brick. Furthermore, staff recommends that the mortar be repointed and the masonry be repaired as needed using products and methods appropriate for historic masonry to prevent further damage.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Sajid. And do we have the applicant on the line? Or a call in? Okay. Check one more time. We do not have the applicant available. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
Okay, so closed public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions? I see Commissioner, Vice Chair Stewart?
This is a project that interested me when I saw the photographs and the staff report. And it looked to me at that point that the repointing that had been done on the front of the structure had chipped away some of the corners of the brick. And so I went by to actually look at it. And in my determination, my opinion, that staining is just from an incomplete removal of mortar when they repointed the front. You don't see that on the sides where it wasn't repointed. It's a solid brick, very little damage in it. And I think that the applicant, if they follow the staff guidelines, expanded staff guidelines that really talk about the proper removal of that mortar, that they'll be happy with what they wind up with. So with respect to this project, I think the staff were right on in their recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Jones?
Sure, I was just going to agree with Commissioner Stewart, Vice Chair Stewart, and go ahead and say with regards to 703 Shelby Avenue, I make a motion to disapprove the request to paint the brick and follow staff guidelines.
Okay, commissioners, we just had a delayed call in by the homeowner, so...
Either way, we need to...
Okay, we do need to hear since we may have moved a little... Hasty. Right, we do have public comment, so let's hold on that. All right, will you say your name and address? Hello? Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Better now.
All right. Hello?
Do you have your cell phone speaker? You might need to take your cell... Hello? Your, your, we're not able to hear you very clearly. Hello?
One second.
Okay.
Mute your phone.
Okay, so if you could mute however you're listening to the hearing, I think that is causing...
One moment, commissioners.
...our sound issues. Okay, are you ready? All right, we're going to try it again. One second. Okay.
Okay, call in?
Yeah, I am calling in favor of the project for 703 Shelby Street.
Can you please give us your name and address?
Yes, Tashi Haad, 16 Shelby.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Just in favor of the detached home rather than the connected with, by the one wall, I think we have more than enough of those. I'm sorry?
Okay, are you calling in on 703 Shelby? We are not discussing 703 Shelby Avenue.
Yeah.
Which, so let me just, where, which project are you calling on?
700 and 703 Shelby, aren't they for the detached property?
No, ma'am.
Front and back?
700B Shelby, they've already made a decision on that project, and they have, they're now working on 703 Shelby, which is a request to paint the brick.
Oh, no, I don't want that one. I want it to detach. Do you know what the decision was?
We, we will...
It was a decision of disapproval, and I apologize, but we'll need to move on with the meeting.
We appreciate, we appreciate your call, though. Okay? Thank you very much. All right, commissioners, we are back on. So I believe who made the, was there a motion, actually? All right, Vice Chair?
Seconded the motion.
Okay, who did the, who motioned?
I don't think we have a motion yet.
Okay, you, so you presented the motion, I believe, Vice Chair.
No, it was me, Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, Commissioner.
All right, just clarify. Commissioner Jones made the motion, and Vice Chair Stewart is seconding. All right, we are taking the roll call, and this is on 703 Shelby Avenue. And when you, okay, so Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
How?
703?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, 703. Okay, yes, to the Vice Chair. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the challenges of having virtual meetings because we can go with the flow, so thank you. All right, so it's now time for the public to comment on the alteration at 918 Lawrence. And that number's on screen, and also 629-255-1911, and Ms. Baldock will present the project.
918 Lawrence is a non-contributing house constructed circa 1955. The house is non-contributing, and MHCC staff issued a preservation permit for the demolition of it in July 2020. Here is the site plan. It meets all the base zoning setbacks, and its location and placement on the lot meet the base zoning setbacks. Here is the front elevation. The infill is one and a half stories, which meets the immediate context. It will have an overall height of 26 feet 6 inches, which is similar to the historic houses in the immediate vicinity. Here are the side elevations. Staff finds that materials, demonstration pattern, roof forms, and overall design meet the design guidelines. The project also includes an outbuilding, which meets all of the design guidelines. Here are some context photos for the street. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval with the conditions that you see here on the screen. I will note that the applicant is in agreement with all of these.
So unless anybody else has any other comments or questions, with respect to 918 Lawrence Avenue, I would move for approval.
Okay. That seems to be a motion by Commissioner Price. We could have some more discussion, but Commissioner Jones?
Second.
Okay. And there's a second. Is there any discussion or ready for the motion to be voted on? Okay. I will call the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. We do look forward to having the rebuilt homes that were damaged. So again, we do extend our sympathies to those who have lost their homes, but it looks like things are moving, so we're very fortunate to have those movements. The next project will be 913 Lawrence Avenue, and the public comment can call in on the screen number, and also 6292551911. And Ms. Baldock will present the project.
913 Lawrence is a circa 1950 cinder block house that does not contribute to the historic character of the Waverly Belmonts' conservation overlay. MHCC staff issued an administrative permit for the demolition of the house in August 2020. In 2017, the applicant also applied for an infill that is similar in design to what is proposed in this application. The commission approved the plans with some conditions, but the applicant never submitted final materials for a permit. Today, the application is to construct infill on the detached accessory dwelling unit. Here is the site planned. The lot is unusually wide at 80 feet. The design guidelines do state that there should be a minimum of 20 feet between a primary structure and an outbuilding. As proposed, the dadao is located in the rear left corner of the property. Therefore, only a small part of the dadao will be 10 feet from the rear of the house, since both are located off-center. Staff finds its placement, the house's placement, and the overall setbacks to meet the design The proposed house meets the design guidelines for height and scale. Here are the side facades. You can see the first floor is brick, as is the foundation. Although the foundation is delineated with a shoulder course of brick, staff recommends that there be a change of material at the foundation level, so that the foundation could be stone, split-face concrete block, or perhaps a stucco. The proposed dadao meets the design guidelines and the dadao ordinance. And here are some context photos. Staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baldock. Is the applicant on the line or would like to comment? If you do, please unmute or raise your hand. Okay? Please say your...
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
My name's Chris. I represent Case Restoration, and we are the ones that are the contractors on the job. So we'd just like to thank you for looking over this.
Excuse me, just one moment. Please complete your full name.
Chris Tigner. T-I-G-N-E-R.
All right. And you are with who?
Case Restoration.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Continue, please.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Just like to thank you guys for looking over this, and we're excited to get it started and get it rebuilt.
Okay. All right. Well, do we have... If that's all your comments, then we'll ask if there's any public comment? We have none that we can record, and if there are any call-ins, none call-ins. So we will close public hearing. And Commissioners, discuss or make a motion or have comment. Another one of our historical structures that damaged by the tornado, unfortunately, but we're moving on forward. Commissioner... Vice Chair Stewart?
Sorry for the loss that the owners experienced on this. Appreciate the new plans, and I look forward to seeing them when they finish it. With respect to 1506 Holly Street, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
Commissioner Jones?
I second.
There's a motion and a second, and I will take the roll. And that is Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Yes. Your mute button. Can you find that mute button, Mr. Mosley? Okay. Did you say...
Yes, for the third time.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again. Now is the time for the public comment to call into 1506 Holly Street. The number's on the screen, and the number is 6292551911. And Ms. Baldock will present the project.
The folk Victorian home at 1506 Holly Street and its 2009 outbuilding were severely damaged in the March 3, 2020 tornado. MHCC staff issued an emergency demolition permit under the rules of order and procedure 6C2C, which allow for administrative issuance of demo permits for any structure that has become a major life safety hazard and based on engineers' findings that the buildings were not repairable. The infill will have the same footprint and setbacks as the historic house that was previously on the lot. Staff finds that these meet the historic context. The new infill is one and a half stories and is similar in height, scale, and overall design to the previous house on the lot. The house will be approximately 23 feet tall and 34 feet wide, which meets the historic context. Here are the side facades. Overall, the design is similar to what was previously on the lot, and the materials, the penetration pattern, roof form, and overall design meets the design guidelines. And here are the plans for the outbuilding, which also meets the design guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the infill and outbuilding with the conditions listed in the staff recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baldock. Is the applicant on the line or would like to comment? If you do, please unmute or raise your hand. Okay? Please say your...
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
My name's Chris. I represent Case Restoration, and we are the ones that are the contractors on the job. So we'd just like to thank you for looking over this.
Excuse me, just one moment. Please complete your full name.
Chris Tigner. T-I-G-N-E-R.
All right. And you are with who?
Case Restoration.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Continue, please.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Just like to thank you guys for looking over this, and we're excited to get it started and get it rebuilt.
Okay. All right. Well, do we have... If that's all your comments, then we'll ask if there's any public comment? We have none that we can record, and if there are any call-ins, none call-ins. So we will close public hearing. And Commissioners, discuss or make a motion or have comment. Another one of our historical structures that damaged by the tornado, unfortunately, but we're moving on forward. Commissioner... Vice Chair Stewart?
Sorry for the loss that the owners experienced on this. Appreciate the new plans, and I look forward to seeing them when they finish it. With respect to 1506 Holly Street, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
Commissioner Jones?
I second.
There's a motion and a second, and I will take the roll. And that is Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. We do look forward to having the rebuilt homes that were damaged. So again, we do extend our sympathies to those who have lost their homes, but it looks like things are moving, so we're very fortunate to have those movements. The next project will be 913 Lawrence Avenue, and the public comment can call in on the screen number, and also 6292551911. And Ms. Baldock will present the project.
913 Lawrence is a circa 1950 cinder block house that does not contribute to the historic character of the Waverly Belmonts' conservation overlay. MHCC staff issued an administrative permit for the demolition of the house in August 2020. In 2017, the applicant also applied for an infill that is similar in design to what is proposed in this application. The commission approved the plans with some conditions, but the applicant never submitted final materials for a permit. Today, the application is to construct infill on the detached accessory dwelling unit. Here is the site planned. The lot is unusually wide at 80 feet. The design guidelines do state that there should be a minimum of 20 feet between a primary structure and an outbuilding. As proposed, the dadao is located in the rear left corner of the property. Therefore, only a small part of the dadao will be 10 feet from the rear of the house, since both are located off-center. Staff finds its placement, the house's placement, and the overall setbacks to meet the design The proposed house meets the design guidelines for height and scale. Here are the side facades. You can see the first floor is brick, as is the foundation. Although the foundation is delineated with a shoulder course of brick, staff recommends that there be a change of material at the foundation level, so that the foundation could be stone, split-face concrete block, or perhaps a stucco. The proposed dadao meets the design guidelines and the dadao ordinance. And here are some context photos. Staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baldock. And is the applicant on line? And it looks like he would like to speak. Please say your name and address.
Yes, hello. Thank you very much. My name's John Root with Root Architecture, the applicant for the project, and our office is located at 753 Aloe Street. And I would like to thank Melissa. It took us over, what, two years to design this house, going back and forth, but I think we've all found a solution that everybody's happy with, and I request today to please approval with staff's recommendations.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Root. Ms. Ziegler, any public comment? Any phone calls? Okay, we have neither, so I will close public hearing. And Commissioners, have any comments, questions, or motion? Vice Chair Stewart?
With respect to 913 Lawrence Avenue, I move for approval with staff conditions.
Commissioner Jones?
Second.
Okay. There's a first and a second. I will take the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Do you have any comments?
Just the only comment is definitely agree with the post. I'm actually already planning it out to replace those to be Craftsman style. My only comment is when the foundations, the block foundations match the color of the brick previously, I would like to possibly request if I can either keep them white or paint them the gray color of the foundation now to match. That's the only... That's my only request.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Ziegler, do we have other public comments? Okay. We have any other call-ins? And no other call-ins, so I will close public hearing. Commissioners, it's your turn. Vice Chair Price?
It sounds like to staff, in staff's opinion, the existing white color, because it is such a small portion of the overall house, is acceptable. I believe Melissa said that. That said...
No, no. That... Oh, I'm sorry. This is Melissa. That was not the staff recommendation. It was that the brick be painted a color closer to the original brick, which was more of a red or an orange-red. Sorry to interrupt. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Yeah, that's not what I heard, so sorry for the miscommunication.
Staff recommend...
I'll wait, I guess, to hear, see what other Commissioners have a say for it right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. It was the applicant that wanted to paint it white or gray. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes, I think that it's... You know, we are charged with adhering not only to the standards set forth for Metro, but by the standards of the Department of Interior from a historic preservation standpoint and best practices. And certainly, all of those universally point to brick being a historic color, such as the red or something similar to that. So I think that, you know, they've worked on this house. The foundation's an appropriate color for the foundation, and I would think that the brick column should be an appropriate color for the columns as well. So with respect to this project, I'd like to move for approval with the staff conditions.
Okay. We do have Commissioner Johnson for comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask, so existing house is white, but when with the rear addition, our staff approved all the material and colored and so forth, just wanted to know what's the color? Would that be white, similar to existing color? Or when addition is made, would that be more appropriate in line with the historical color? If our staff can clarify that, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. This is Melissa Saget again. So the proposed addition is actually siding. We... In Edgefield, we would not review the color, painting the color of wood. It would only be for masonry. The real issue here is that before the current owner bought it, the previous owner made some changes that were unpermitted. The things they did, they painted the smooth concrete block foundation from red to the gray that you see here, which staff finds that that would be fine. That's an appropriate color for foundation. The two other things they did were replace the front porch posts, which the ones that were there previously were these ornamental metal porch posts. So replacing those would have been fine, but we would recommend that they be a more simple design, similar to what's seen in this 1969 photo, which shows tapered columns. The applicants agreed to make those change... To work with us to make those changes. The only thing remaining is when these changes were made, these brick piers, which you see here, look to be a red brick, were also painted white. The design guidelines state that unpainted brick shouldn't be painted, but, I mean, at this point, it's already painted. And since it's just such a small part of the house, staff finds that it could be appropriate to keep them painted, but we would recommend that they be repainted a color closer to the brick that was there, the color of the brick that was there previously. So I hope that clarifies.
But I do concur with Commissioner Johnson on the question, I guess it's just a question, where did the applicant mention to you if what color the siding would be?
We would not... We didn't ask what color the siding would be, since we don't review the color of siding. Now, if they had wanted to clad the addition in brick, yes, we would review a brick sample for the color, texture, dimensions, and so forth. But for the siding, we're really just looking at the product. Is it a wood? Is it a composite siding? What's the reveal? What's the texture of the siding? Is it smooth? And so forth. So the actual color, we don't... We would not review. So that would be up to the owner.
Commissioner Johnson?
to keep them painted, but we would recommend that they be repainted a color closer to the brick that was there, the color of the brick that was there previously. So, I hope that clarifies.
But I do concur with Commissioner Johnson on the question, I guess it's just a question, where did the applicant mention to you if what color the siding would be?
We would not, we didn't ask what color the siding would be since we don't, we don't review the color of siding. Now, if they had wanted to clad the addition in brick, yes, we would review a brick sample for the color, texture, dimensions, and so forth. But for the siding, we're really just looking at the product. Is it a wood? Is it a composite siding? What's the reveal? What's the texture of the siding? Is it smooth? And so forth. So, the actual color, we don't, we would not review. So, that would be up to the owner.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you. The reason I asked is if developers going through and try to do, comply with historical zoning and material and so forth. So, if that's the case, you know, small portion of the brick should be complied. But however, if a developer is going into the white siding as existing siding color, you know, in the spirit of preserving, I totally agree with the staff, it should be, come up with within the guideline and stain back or appropriate color. But I'm kind of bit torn because if all the adding addition of the material color is white, maybe such a small portion, so, you know, leaving it white might be appropriate. So, I am interested, you know, how other commissioner feels about that. I mean, I agree with, you know, it should be, in the spirit of preservation, it should be preserved with original color or similar to. But in the context of the larger housing and all the design guideline and building design and so forth, and then especially siding color is white, maybe we can kind of get an exception on that portion. So, I'm torn on that decision.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, we do have a motion on the table. If we have someone second and then we can have discussion. Will someone second the motion or is the motion okay? Commissioner Mahal?
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a first and a second. There's still discussion out here from Commissioner Johnson. Do you have any comments on that before we make the roll call?
No, no more comment. It just, yes, I am still torn based on the overall design and no more comment. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, we will, that's in the notes and we will, yes, we will have that recorded in the notes as a comment. Thank you so much and I will do, and very well said, and we will take the roll call at the moment. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. We will move on to 3616A Westbrook Avenue. Again, the public can call in to 629-255-1911 and Ms. Warren will present the project.
Hi, well, good afternoon. The application is to construct a new single-family infill including a raised pool deck and attached garage. These three features are all combined into one large building with an interior corridor connecting the garage to the house underneath the raised pool deck. The proposal does not meet the design guidelines for scale as the house is 45 feet wide, where the context on similar-sized lots is closer to 30 to 36 feet wide. The proposal does not meet the design guidelines for open space as the house is very deep at 87 feet. The garage is connected to the primary house via a raised hallway underneath the pool deck. This connection creates one long footprint from front setback to rear setback, which measures about 160 feet deep. The commission has approved attached garages when they are fully connected to the rear of the house. However, in this case, the method of connection is via a fully enclosed hallway from the house. The floor plan is one long structure, creating exceptionally large massing and lot coverage. This form is not typical of an attached garage and is not appropriate to the context. Staff recommends disapproval of the project, finding it does not meet the following design guidelines: Section 2B-1B for scale and Section 2B-1H for an outbuilding. I know the applicant is here, would like to speak.
Yes, please, and please give us your name and address.
Hello, this is Julia Grissette with Gilbert and Gossela Architects. We're at 2305 Klein Avenue. I believe the homeowner may actually be calling in as well, so we'll try to save some of our time for him at the end. But in our reading of the staff recommendations for this project, it seemed to us that there were two objections.
Hey, buddy, hurry.
Excuse me, we actually sent a couple of slides in to Jenny yesterday that should be at the end of this. If you could pull up the site plan that we had sent in.
Oh, perfect, oh, perfect.
All right.
I know, I know.
So, there's two comments that we're really looking to address here. The first is the scale and massing of the project extending across the site, and that has to do with the interpretation of whether this is one large structure or whether this reads more as three distinct structures. And then the second is the overall width of the primary structure. And we're going to go over both of those. We wanted to start with talking about the massing and the overall concept. So, our client, Jeff Estep, came to us with a vision to build a new home for his family on this lot, complete with a pool and garage access from within the main residence. He and his family actually renovated and currently live in the house next door to this lot in 3616B, and they're well-integrated into the neighborhood and really invested in the character of the street. This lot sits in the middle of the 3600 block of Westbrook Avenue with alley access from the rear and an elevated train track running behind that alley. And we say that just to emphasize that there's really no views from the back of the lot. And because we have the alley, we knew that vehicular access had to come from the rear of the property, but in order to preserve the lot space for the pool, the pool deck, we really didn't want to pull a driveway all the way through the lot to the rear of the main residence for a traditional attached garage. We also knew that the design guidelines had verbiage stating that attached garages may be permissible if they're in the area of a traditional outbuilding with garage access from the rear of the property at a basement level, all of which seem to describe our situation. So, in order to preserve open space on the lot and make the building massing and keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, we decided we wanted to develop the site as a main residence and an outbuilding garage form with a pool deck in the middle. We still wanted to maintain that basement level access from the main residence to the garage. So, with our garage burden, we've actually, with our garage building, we've actually taken on a double burden in designing so that the project needs to base zoning setbacks and building coverage limitations for an attached garage. But we pulled the scale of the building down to comply with the historical guidelines for outbuilding, massing, and design. If you could move to the next image of the elevation, please. So, I mentioned that the lot slopes significantly from front to back, and one of the goals for the project is to use that natural slope to be able to install this pool with minimal excavation and then use that basement volume below the pool deck to provide the homeowner with the comfort and convenience of a protected connection from the basement of the main residence to the garage. One of the notes in the staff review addresses connection as a raised hall, and I just wanted to clarify real quick that this is not a raised area of the pool deck. It's actually level with the rest of the pool deck, and the hall is actually lowered and excavated in the basement as indicated in those red lines on that elevation. From the exterior, there's actually no indication of this hall or any occupiable space below the pool deck, and the walls of the pool deck don't extend significantly higher than a standard six-foot privacy fence above an in-ground pool wood. We recessed the pool deck in it besides from the main residence, which further screams the view of the pool deck from the public way. We dropped the pool deck three feet below the entry level of the main residence, and we chose that elevation for a few reasons. First, it's about the most we could drop below that main level without providing a true staircase from the main residence to the pool, which we felt was a little less convenient and a little more dangerous than just five steps down. Second, it's as low as we could really go without requiring significant escalation of the site for the pool to work with the natural grade. And third, because if we set this pool at this elevation with a standard three-foot guardrail like you see here, it's basically the same height as if we did a true in-ground pool with a traditional six-foot fence around it. You can see in the blue lines there what a traditional in-ground pool starting at the highest point of our elevation there with a six-foot privacy fence would be, and our guardrail right now is about four inches taller than this wall would have been. So, we've really taken a lot of steps to minimize the massing of this pool deck, and because it's recessed from the sides and so far belligerent of the street, we really don't think it's visible from the public way at all. We actually feel like from the exterior, the site development of this lot looks like a main residence, an outbuilding, and a pool deck, and that's how it ought to be reviewed. So, even though they're connected, because you can't perceive the connection at all from the exterior, we really feel like from a historical and massing perspective, it's appropriate to what's on the neighborhood as well. Our house, the main residence of our house extends approximately as far back on the site as the house next door at 3616B, and it's a pretty common house size for this neighborhood, neighborhood. So, with that said, we'd like to move on and talk about the width of the structure. If you could move to the next slide, please. So, we've drawn a streetscape of our entire block for Westbrook Avenue. We took the building widths from the property assessors and publicly available information, so we feel pretty good about our house sizes there. And then we actually happen to have, one of our architects in-house lives on this block also, so we've got some pretty good information for most of these houses. But we feel like the width of this house and the relationship of open space between houses is in proportion with the rest of the street. We're exceeding our side setback requirements under the base zoning. We're sided 15 foot six inches from 3616B and we're over 18 feet from 3614 at the front facade, and that spacing is consistent with the street. There's several other houses on this block face that are in the 40 to 45-foot width range, most notably 3621, which is across the street. It's 44 feet wide at the base with two-foot eve overhangs, so it's effectively appearing as 48 feet wide. You can see in the blue lines there that this house eclipses the one we're proposing to build, and the house next door to it is actually wider than the house that we're proposing at 48 feet. It's just not quite as tall. But the height that we're proposing for our building is within the average of the rest of the block face. Our building design is inspired by the Tudor Revival style homes in the district, which presents a different massing than the Craftsman-style homes that dominate the majority of this block face. The Craftsman homes mostly present as one continuous mass right along the front facade, dominated by this large roof with generous overhangs. Our building actually steps back from the front, and it has smaller roof lines at the front facade and really minimal overhangs. So, that's how we're kind of mitigating some of the massing. That's how our 45-foot building is smaller than the 44-foot building across the street.
Ms. Grissette, you have a... You have a...
Okay, I'd like to leave the rest of the time for the homeowner then, if he's on the line.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, trying to connect, trying to connect. Are we here? Are we here?
Yes, you are.
Perfect, thank you. I'll be quick.
We're getting...
One thing I want to point out, when we met at Historic a couple of weeks ago, one thing that Paul Hoffman mentioned...
Let me just interrupt for real quick. Please, please give us your name.
I'm sorry, it's Jeff Estep. I'm the owner of the property, the subject property as well as the property next door at 3616B Westbrook.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, as I mentioned, we met at Historic, and one thing Paul mentioned, it's kind of an unprecedented situation that we're proposing, and I just, with the size of the structure and whatnot, I just want to point out, just in a quick, quick drive through the neighborhood, I think I found 13 or maybe 15 homes that pretty much have the same, same layout that we have that take up the entire, their entire property. So, I think precedence has been set if massing is actually the issue. I feel like our massing is smaller in relation to the other homes that I found, addresses 3625 to 3657 Richland Avenue, as well as 3725 Central and 3530 to 3546 Richland Avenue. All of these are new construction within the last one to five years, so I feel like precedence has been set when considering massing as an issue. And that's, that's all I've got to say.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Honor. Okay, do we have any public comments? We do not. Okay, do we have any call-ins? All right, neither, so I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners? Discussion, questions? There's a lot here. Would you like to, Commissioners, Commissioner Mosley?
I was curious, if we could look at the site plan again. And I'm wondering how much of, so the property top of the page to the north appears, if I'm not mistaken, to fill an equivalent amount of the lot as this one does. And I'm wondering if, you know, if it's a function of rendering, of the rendering of the photograph that the pool appears in the middle and that we're showing, that graphically on the elevation, there's equal weight provided to what amounts to a privacy fence and then an outbuilding. I want to, it's not a disagreement necessarily with staff, but I want to give this application a fair shake for what it is, which appears to be a, you know, it's a main house with the pool house and garage in the back, and the pool happens to connect at an element of the landscape, has to connect, happens to connect that in between. In my mind, because the lot slopes down, you know, we don't get into what happens in the basement of people's houses and what connects where. I'm not dismissing that as part of the analysis of this project, but I think because it occurs below grade, I myself am not tremendously wound up about that. The application, the applicant in presenting the streetscape, you know, it certainly appears in scale on the, you know, in the information that the applicant, the applicant's architect has provided, that is compelling to me, and it's no larger, with the exception of the outbuilding. If the outbuildings are permitted in the, you know, in the neighborhood, you're not affecting the neighbor behind because you've got the train tracks there. This one doesn't, doesn't bother me too terribly much, in my opinion, but I'd certainly love to hear what other commissioners have to say.
Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Jones here. Yeah, I tend to concur with Commissioner Mosley in that, I mean, I'm just looking at everything that they presented and also the staff recommendation, which I completely see where the staff recommendation came from, but just looking at surrounding buildings and just for this lot in particular, you know, using the slope as an advantage and, you know, I'm also just kind of inclined to, I kind of think it's a nice, I mean, I think it's a nice project, you know, using the slope, using this particular lot, you know, not, not super visible from the street with the railroad in the back. So, again, I tend to agree with that Commissioner Mosley and his comments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Vice Chair?
I understand the comments of the other commissioners. One of the things I did was go by this house in this neighborhood, and the applicant's entirely right that there are a lot of houses on Richland that are of this proportion and magnitude. However, a lot of the existing houses on Richland were very large homes that had a great presence on that street as well. Westbrook is a lot different in that the houses on that street are primarily one, one-and-a-half stories, a few two-stories, only a couple of houses that, like the one next door, that approximate the size of this one. And when I looked at the plans, gosh, I looked at the front and I said, that looks, looks like it really fits in. And then I saw the side elevation and the massing of the outbuilding, and it just, it did feel like it overwhelmed the scale of this street. And I know that we do the conservation overlays at the request of the neighborhood to maintain the character of those neighborhoods. Whereas the front, I don't think poses any real problem with that. The depth of this and the massiveness on the site, I can see where the staff came from when they came with the recommendation. from when they came up with the recommendation. So, well, well done plan, well done house. I just question the context on this street.
Other commissioners? Oh, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I do appreciate other commissioners' comment. You know, looking at the drawings and thought into it, and I think this is a really good house. And only question is, relation to the lot and surrounding neighborhood, mass and size is appropriate for this location. So I am torn on this one. Other than, so it's not the largest house in the block, but according to the staff recommendation, it's the second largest. So one thing I'm not clear about is, could you explain, staff explain to me about the connection from main house to outbuilding and the pool's height? And so that connection is not appropriate in the historic design. If you would explain that, where staff come up with that decision, that would be very helpful.
Sure. This is Jenny Warren, and we did, Paul and I did meet with the applicants quite a while ago and saw an earlier version of this, and we have worked with them extensively on this design. So what you are seeing is a result of a lot of back and forth between the applicants and staff. And you are correct, they provided a fantastic streetscape that we love. We were really appreciative of how helpful that was in helping to determine the massing. So your question regarding the connector, this is something, and I know you're newer to the commission, so I don't know if you've seen this before, but the commission has been pretty consistent that they do not allow, excuse me, do not allow connections between an outbuilding and a primary structure that are enclosed. A covered connection is okay if it's open air, but the commission has been consistent in not allowing enclosed connections. And to us, looking at this, it just does not read as an attached garage. So we, we were interpreting it as a connected garage, and we do, the commission has not allowed enclosed connections. So that was the issue that we were raising there. Does that help clarify?
Yes, it does. Thank you, appreciate it.
Other commissioners? Mr. Mosley?
Oh.
Yeah, I would, Commissioner Stewart did, did drive, drive through and is certainly more familiar with this district, whether it be through that drive-through or just living, living on that end of town. I'm curious if, if you might, if you would weigh in a little, little further on, you know, it's, it's, as I said before, I'm compelled by the front elevation, the argument that the applicant's architect makes for that. The depth of the house and sort of its, its scale and massing from, from the side, you know, slightly to, not a straight street, but one that, you know, you sort of drive in a, in an arc around. Is it, do you think that it is overbearing in, in the neighborhood in terms of what its, what its appearance would be? Is, is that your opinion in review of it? Or does it, is it contrasting greatly, I guess, with, with the, with the general scale of the neighborhood? Or is it happening to push up again, it could, and it may be doing both of these things at the same time. It seems to me that it may be pushing up against the larger, largest homes on the street.
Yeah, I obviously didn't measure all the homes and that kind of thing, but...
Of course.
The visual check, it looked like it would be one of the probably three largest homes on the street and among a lot of more modest homes. I think that actually, you know, the house next door that the applicant lives in is about the same depth, and so it's, it doesn't contrast with that one. And with the, it is a pretty good slope down from that. So I don't, although the, the outbuilding is, is larger in scale than most of the outbuildings that we approve, it, you know, will be lower and further away. So, yeah, so, so, yeah, it'll, it'll obviously be either the largest or one of the largest, you know, masses of buildings on the street and, and not, not, not be, you know, the average or anywhere close to the main. So is that a help, Sam? I'm, I'm with you, though. I like the front elevations. I think that fits in well with the street and, and, and works well with the other elevations in front.
Right. I'd like to hear from Commissioner Price and Commissioner Mahal. Either. Thank you. Commissioner Price?
I tend to, I'm persuaded by Commissioner Vice Chair Stewart's concerns of the overall size, footprint of what is essentially one continuous structure. And the staff's analysis that this is a connected outbuilding, connected garage, which is not something we historically have approved, even though it's, it's a weird one. I haven't seen one where it's been connected basically subterraneously. So that's, that's a new curve ball. But I, I think, I, I agree, it's a nice house, but I, I am skeptical of the, the scope of the project being one very large, continuous building on the lot. So I think that's all I have to say for right now.
All right. Commissioner Mahal?
Well, this is a tough one. It's a great project and beautiful home and, but I am, I am persuaded by, and a great presentation by the, the homeowner and, and architect. But I, I guess I will have to lean on, as David, as Commissioner Price said, on, on Commissioner Stewart's view of what our mission is and that this, this, this doesn't quite fit in with, with what we've been charged with, with the neighborhood by wanting this conservation overlay. And so that's where I'm...
Okay, Commissioner Price?
Yes, did we get, was there any feedback from the councilperson or neighborhood group?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you.
I wonder if the applicant had talked to any neighbors. Can we ask? Commissioner Mosley?
Can you go back to the staff's recommendations, please, just for mine?
Yes, please. Okay. Are we ready to make a motion? And we will see how we go with this. How about that? Okay? So if someone will make the motion, we'll see how commissioners vote.
Yes, I, you know, I recognize this is a beautifully crafted plan, and, and the presentation was very much appreciated, and the work the architects went into presenting information that we could see. I just still remain feeling that, that this, although would be much more appropriate on Richland, is not as appropriate for Westbrook. So with respect to thirty-six sixteen A Westbrook Avenue, I move for disapproval with staff recommendations.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? All right, Commissioner Price?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a second, and we will take the roll and say yes or no. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Meaning staff approval. Yeah, staff recommendation. Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
No.
All right. Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay. So we have one, two, three, four yeses and two noes. So is that what you have, Robin? Okay, so the motion passes. And thank you, applicant. We do commend you for all the work, and hopefully we can continue to have discussion with the staff. Okay, onto the next one, which is nineteen oh three Holly Street. And public, again, can call in to six-two-nine-two-five-five-one-nine-one-one. And Ms. Warren will present the project.
Yes. A historic house on this lot was recently demolished, having received an emergency demolition permit under the rules of order and procedure six C to C after being severely damaged by the March third tornado in East Nashville. This is a proposal to construct an infill house and an outbuilding on that lot. The new house will have a one and a half story form with a width of thirty-three feet and a ridge height of twenty-eight feet seven inches from grade. Staff finds this height and scale to be appropriate. The building will have a side gabled primary roof form with a shed dormer on the front and a gambrel form in the rear. The roof form setbacks materials proportion the rhythm of windows and proposed outbuilding all meet the design guidelines. Staff recommends approval with the conditions listed in the report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Warren. And is the applicant on the line? I see that. Please give us your name and address.
This is Peggy Newman, thirteen oh six Belmont Park Court, Nashville, Tennessee, three-seven-two-one-five.
Thank you.
And all I can say is if you have any questions, let me know, but we agreed to comply with the staff recommendations that we've been presented with.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Newman. Robin, have we had any public comments?
Yes, we have. Councilmember Withers writes the following, "I wanted to drop a quick note of support for the infill housing application for nineteen oh three Holly Street. As noted in the staff report, this parcel is one of many. They were impacted by the March third tornado. While this application does not approximate the house that originally stood there, it does respect the architectural character of the area, as well as the height and massing of the houses that do remain in that portion of the neighborhood. I've been a fan of Peggy Newman's thoughtful designs for infill houses in the East Nashville overlay districts, and this one brings many unique features, including tapered brick porch column bases, arched porch brackets, and a covered walkway connecting to the house and the garage. I believe that this project would enhance the architectural interest and character of this portion of the Lakeland Springs neighborhood that is having to create a new built form identity this year as tornado recovery slowly progresses." Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Do we have any call-ins? Okay, we do not have any call-ins, and we don't have, so Ms. Newman, do you have any comments to Councilman Withers?
I'm gonna cry. I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much as well. We appreciate all the work. All right, we will close the public hearing. And commissioners?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendations for the nineteen oh three Holly Street.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Stewart?
Oh, second.
Okay, there's the first, there's the second. You will take the roll call. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will move on to nineteen oh six Blair Boulevard, and again, the public can call in to six-two-nine-two-five-five-one-nine-one-one, and Ms. Sajit will present the project.
This is a proposal to demolish a non-contributing one-story duplex and construct a new two-and-a-half story duplex. The infill will have a height of thirty-two feet six inches from grade and will gain an additional story in the rear due to the change in grade. The historic context includes one and a half to two and a half story houses ranging from twenty-two to thirty-six feet tall. Staff finds that the two and a half story form and overall height can be appropriate for the context. The infill will be forty feet wide. Staff finds that the proposed width to be inappropriate for the historic context. Nearby houses on fifty-foot wide lots, which is the same width as the subject property, range from thirty to thirty-two feet. Here is the, the context. Nineteen twenty and nineteen eighteen Blair Boulevard are both on fifty-foot wide lots, whereas the house at nineteen sixteen Blair, which is the, the top right, the photo on the top, the far right, labeled nineteen twenty, but it's actually nineteen sixteen. So it's a wider house, but it's located on a fifty-five foot wide lot. The lot at nineteen oh six Blair, the subject property, is ten percent narrower than nineteen sixteen Blair Boulevard, but the lot is otherwise very similar. Therefore, staff suggests that the structure at nineteen oh six Blair Boulevard should be about ten percent narrower as well, or a maximum of thirty-five feet wide. With the condition that the infill at nineteen oh six Blair Boulevard is reduced to thirty-five feet wide, staff finds that the height and width of the infill will be compatible with the surrounding context and that, and that it will meet section two B, one A, and B of the design guidelines. Staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Sajit. And is the applicant on the line? Right? Please state your name and address. Yes, sir.
Yes, this is Will Jenner, twenty-six-ten Westwood Drive, Nashville, Tennessee, three-seven-two-zero-four. We are, we are in agreement with the staff's recommendations on everything except for the width, and we'd like to have a conversation with the commission about that. The, the house that we're proposing, what we're trying to do is, is mitigate that width of that forty feet by undulating the front facade and actually recessing the, the, the front doors sixteen feet back. If you can go to the slide that has the, the side elevation, let's see, maybe one more.
I'm sorry, I don't think that's included.
Oh, there's not a side elevation?
They have all of the elevations in their packets, but not every drawing shows up in the presentation.
Okay, gotcha. Well, the, you can see there are sort of, so the, the, the front entries are actually set back sixteen feet from the front of the house. And you can see with, with the roofs, we, we've dropped those two and a half feet from the main ridge line. So from the, from the very front of the house, you know, the main massing is thirty-two feet wide, which is more in character of the, the lots that are typical to our, to ours. So we feel like this is a, is a, possibly a good solution, a compromise to, to get that width narrower and then, you know, bring it back wider as we go farther back away from the other houses. I believe the house on nineteen fourteen has a bump out of five feet on the left side, which is farther back as well, to bring them to a thirty-five feet width on a forty-five foot wide lot, which would be very similar to us on doing a forty-foot wide on a fifty-foot lot. We, we did, the, the owner measured nineteen twenty Blair, which we believe is forty feet wide instead of the thirty-nine. So, and, yeah, the nineteen twenty Blair Boulevard, that is, you know, it's a, it's an old four-square, two-story, you know, very flat front with that, with the, the front porch that goes all the way across. And we feel like we're doing a, a good job of trying to break up that facade, so it's not quite as, you know, the massing in three D is, is a little more subtle than, than just, you know, a full two-story all the way to the front, like nineteen twenty. And I believe there's one across the street that's a duplex as well, that's just a tall two-story front-facing. I have with me Buck Snyder, you on?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add that there is a very...
Who is speaking, please?
Oh, sorry, thank you. Buck Snyder, twenty-six-ten Westwood Drive.
Thank you, sir.
I'm, I'm the general contractor. The owner couldn't be with us, so I'm speaking on his behalf. I helped him through the initial design of the project, which was based on another duplex approved in a, a separate historic district. approved in a separate historic district. But we did find some compatibility, not just on the same block face, but across the street of other historic-approved projects. And I'd just like to chime in on that.
Okay. So you're done with comments for the moment? All right, I'll ask Ms. Ziegler if we have any public comments. Do we have any call-ins? Neither, so I will close public hearing. Is it helpful to see side elevations? Yes, Vice Chair?
Could we go back to the slide showing the other compatible houses on the street? So even the 1916 Blair Boulevard that's labeled 1920, even that's only 39 feet wide versus the 45 that we're looking at for this one? You know, I can understand the stepping back at the entrances on the sides and trying to reduce the size of the mass, but I still think the 45 feet in context with these other houses on Blair is wider than what's appropriate there.
This is Melissa Saget again. Just a clarification, the infill is proposed to be 40 feet wide, so roughly the same width as the 1916 Blair, but on a narrower lot.
And the width of the lots were how much?
So for the 1916 Blair, it's a 55-foot wide lot, and this property is a 50-foot wide lot.
Commissioner Price, did you have your hand raised before?
Yes, sir. I was gonna clarify exactly what Melissa just said, that it's a proposed 40-foot wide building.
Okay.
Since I'm on, I'm persuaded by the staff recommendation that this is a huge building that will overwhelm the historic context. So I'm in support of reducing the width of the property to be in line with the design guidelines and staff recommendation.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Discussion or motion? Commissioner Jones?
Sure, Commissioner Jones, I was just going to say, you know, I am looking at the side elevations in our packet. And again, I think I agree with our vice chair in that, you know, I understand that they're trying to do it, and it is quite, if you look at it, it is quite a depth difference where the doors are from the main portion of the house. But I still think when you look head-on to the building, this front facade that we're seeing now, it still reads, you know, as a wide house. So, I agree with Vice Chair and Commissioner Price.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Further comments or a motion? Commissioner Mahal?
Yes, with respect to 1906 Blair Boulevard, I make a motion to approve the staff recommendations.
Okay, there's a motion. Commissioner Johnson?
Second motion.
Okay, there's the first and the second. I will take the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We are moving on to 1406 A and B Boscoval Street. Again, public can call in to 629-255-1911. And Ms. Warren will present again.
Okay, this is an application for the construction of a rear deck, which will encroach five feet into the rear setback. The report states that there was some confusion as to whether a setback determination is needed, and we have confirmed with the codes department that the request does indeed encroach into the rear setback. The purpose of the commission having the ability to approve setbacks that are less than the bulk standards is so that it can easily address historic conditions. This property has no existing historic conditions. The duplex already sits closer to the rear setback than the surrounding houses, and is quite close to the alley already without an additional five feet of depth. In addition, codes has told us that there may likely be lock coverage and stormwater issues with this request. Staff does not see a compelling reason for the decks to be allowed within the setback and finds that the proposal does not meet Section 2B3 of the design guidelines. Staff recommends disapproval of the setback determination, finding it does not meet Section 2B3 of the design guidelines. I know the applicant is here and would like to speak as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Warren. Applicant?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, this is Brittany Blanton with B. Blanton Design. So I have a few slides. Let's see, the first one's up there. And I just wanted to thank you guys for considering this with me, and thank you to Jenny and Robin for their help. I'll try to be quick, because I know I'm the last person. So I just wanted to offer a little bit of additional information on the codes confusion and the extension of the decks and the surrounding areas. So if you look at that first slide, we're actually just looking to push the column supporting the deck 30 inches towards the rear setback, and then the deck on Unit A will cantilever over that two feet. These will both remain uncovered. And then if you could go to the next slide for me, please. So this sits on an improved alley at the rear, and then it dead-ends into an alley that runs from Boscoval to Shelby. So visibility from the street is super low, and if you can go to the next slide too, please, the grade even makes the visibility from South 14th Street, the only street you'd be able to see this from, really low because of the steep grade as well. And then the next slide addresses the code confusion. So I didn't receive any clarification on this particular line in the code from the codes department, but within the urban zoning overlay, which is where these two houses are, you can actually have a covered or enclosed porch that encroaches into the rear setback up to three feet from the side or rear property lines. So our interpretation is that this uncovered porch kind of acts like a roof structure would. So we're not really encroaching any more than an enclosed porch would be under this urban zoning overlay guideline. And then, the next slide will just show some of the context. So there are two detached structures that sit closer to the alleyway. One is 1419 Shelby Avenue, and one is 1410 Boscoval Street, and that's one house down from 1406. And then there's also an attached kind of garage carport at 1408 Boscoval. And that is on the next slide. I don't know if you have that one available. Yeah, so you can see there, we would actually, if we moved that post 30 inches, be about in line with the edge of that carport, and then you can see the view from the alley as well. So based on these points, I would like to request for the commission to approve the setback as shown. And that's the end of that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Blanton. Okay. Ms. Ziegler, any public comments? And do we have any phone calls? We have neither, so I will close public hearing. And commissioners, discussion, commissions, questions to the applicant? Commissioner Mahal?
Yes, so I would say that the setback matching the property next door is kind of a compelling argument that the applicant makes, and I just thought I'd put forth that thought.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Price?
Well, I understand Commissioner Mahal's comment. This block in Lockland Springs was kind of a wild, wild west before it was added to the overlay, district overlay, and I don't think a lot of it would have been permitted under the current guidelines. So I think that that carport next door was built before there was any, before this body had any jurisdiction over design along this block. So just, I just want to add that context. I may be incorrect about that, but I'm pretty sure a lot of this was done, obviously, before any overlay district was in place.
I think you're right, Commissioner. Unless staff has any others. So, staff agrees. They're nodding their heads. How much? Yeah, maybe not ask that question. Commissioner Price?
Again, I'm persuaded by the staff analysis. This duplex, the duplexes at 1406 A and B almost entirely cover the entire lot as it is, and I believe that the setbacks are there for a reason, and I don't see any reason to grant additional setback determination.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, yes. Unless Commissioner Stewart has something to add.
I have a second to add to that motion.
Okay. With respect to 1406 A and B Boscoval, I move to approve the staff recommendation of disapproval of the setback determination.
Okay. And Vice Chair Stewart has seconded that motion. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. All right, I will take the roll call. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
All right. Do you have any other comments? Actually, I just kind of put you on the spot, Robin. I'm just looking at all these projects. Just wanted to get, you know, just some background. You know, during this time, has the number of projects come your way about the same or has it lessened? How has this time affected your office?
I think it's probably about the same in terms of number of permits. However, you know, look at the other two, the calls and the meetings, there seem to be more of them. I mean, construction is not slowing down in the overlays. I feel like it's busier, and I feel like we're all fully operational, working from our little dining room tables or wherever we are working from. But it feels busier to me, you know? It feels like there are a lot of inquiries, a lot of it's tornado-related, but a lot of it's not. A lot of it's people sitting at home and realizing they need more space.
All right. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe we have one more project that was taken off consent agenda.
We didn't have anything taken off consent.
413 North 16th.
This is John Root?
It is.
And which project are you referring to, sir? We didn't get any requests to remove anything from consent.
I apologize.
So was it approved?
It was approved with the conditions of the staff recommendation.
It was approved, you've heard Robin, right, Mr. Root?
Yes, I hear that.
Okay.
Can we remove it, please? We would like to discuss it. Is there a way to do that?
Let's ask our legal counsel to weigh in. Are you still with us?
Yeah, you can, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, you can, I mean, the board, this has already been decided, although it was on consent, so since the meeting hasn't closed, the board could choose to take it up, kind of like if you had, if you voted on something and then you had subsequent requests for public comment or something, that you could do that. Or you could ask that they simply petition for a rehearing. Well, I, so, I mean, what we would do if this was public comment is we would recommend that you go ahead and hear this, just because the technology issues that happen back and forth make it to where it's no guarantee that someone will be able to call in when they want to.
Do you think that, this is Robin, do you think we should ask that it be moved to next month? Because if there was anyone who wanted to speak to it...
Who jumped off?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be appropriate. Just put it on the next docket.
I'm sorry, guys, I would have, I would have asked for it to pull off consent at the beginning of the meeting had I not known this. I didn't hear the project, and so I waited the whole meeting to hear it, because I know we go to the very end if we get pulled off.
Let me ask the commissioners. Commissioner, Vice Chair, do you have comments, or?
Yeah, so it seems to me that at the beginning of the meeting, we did ask the public if anyone had anything to be taken off consent, and they didn't, you know, we didn't get any responses from anybody then. So, you know, given that the public was given the opportunity to talk about this, it'd be interesting to hear from our legal counsel if it would be appropriate to go ahead and hear this today, get this done, instead of pushing it back a month.
Mr. Dickerson?
I mean, it wouldn't be inappropriate. The concern I have would be the same as Robin expressed, right? If there was, if someone expected their case to be on consent, the consent was voted on, and then they hopped off the call. If the board, if the commission ultimately disapproved something that was on consent, then the person who hopped off the call is gonna have a right to say, okay, well, I didn't have a chance to be heard, and I left the call.
Or the applicant.
That's what I mean, sorry.
Yeah, that as well, too. Applicants and public comments.
The applicant's here.
If the applicant's here and you have someone who wishes to have it pulled off consent to have a discussion, then I think you should go ahead and hear it right now.
So I'm a little confused. So who, is Mr. Root the applicant?
Yes, the applicant is with us. My only concern was if someone wants to speak to it because it might change, because it's come off consent, that they are off the call, thinking it's approved as is.
So, Mr. Root, it was approved under consent, so that's not sufficed for you?
The version that I submitted was not approved, ma'am.
I'm not, we're not sure what you mean by the version you submitted.
The drawings, the design that was submitted was not approved. A staff recommendations overruled part of the design. Does that make any sense?
Yes, yes, you're right. The drawings were approved with those conditions.
And you're not agreeing to the conditions, is what's happening?
He can, since this is the applicant who wants to challenge it, he can always, he can always appeal the commission's decision to approve with staff conditions.
Can he bring it back to next month?
I have to see what the rules say about that.
I mean, the worst, the worst case here is we get the approval, the staff approval, right? So that's what I'm asking for, is just to be heard.
So again, just let me, let me, let me just be clear here. So it was approved on the consent agenda, however, you have a point that you're not agreeing to?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I think once I go into my presentation, you'll understand.
Okay, so our legal counsel, Mr. Dickerson, is looking up?
Yeah, it just says that, it says that any aggrieved party may, within 60 days of the public hearing, in the case they participated in, request a rehearing. So that could be, if he's requesting it right now, it can be set for the, for the next meeting, and that will ensure that there is... and that will ensure that there is no problem with anyone who opposes it, having gotten off the call. You know, let's just say there was someone who wanted this, this to be approved with staff recommendations, they sat on to have public comments, once staff recommendations were taken up as part of consent agenda, they got off the call, it allows that, that individual, uh, to participate next month. So I think you could hear this next month.
Okay, do we, do we need to vote on that, Mr. Dickerson?
No, once he, once he appeals it, it's, uh, Robin, do you, when you get requests for rehearing, do you simply put that on the calendar, that as part of the next agenda?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's what you would do, you just put it on there, you don't have to vote for it?
Okay, Commissioners, do you understand, do you have any questions? I know both Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Jones have their hands raised, let's take Commissioner Johnson first.
Madam Chair, I was agreeing on, uh, rehearing, uh, not here today, but put on the agenda, so just all fairness and transparency, so anybody who want to express, uh, opinion one way or the other, they will have a fair and transparent opportunity to do so next month. So that's, I just wanted to, uh, share on that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones, did you have another comment?
Nope, just agree with, uh, what Commissioner Johnson just said.
Okay, so, Mr. Root, that will be your, this project will be on next month's agenda, so that there will be transparency to the public and they can comment.
Okay.
Okay?
I mean, it's not okay, but I guess it's okay.
Well, we're not hearing it today.
Okay.
Because there's not a chance for the public to comment. So y- you will have the chance to, to rehear it next month, and for public to also comment.
Understood.
And there, there, there is a decision for the day.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much for your time waiting, we do appreciate that. Okay, all right, Commissioners, any other comments? If not, we will call this meeting adjourned, and we thank you for your time, it has been gone over a little bit. We also want to thank staff and also Metro IT. And have a good evening, everybody, be safe. You.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville dot go.